Okay, John, Brian. Okay.
Okay Chair, I think we're ready. All right, I'd like to, uh, to call to attend the tonight's November 12th meeting of the Athletic Subcommittee. Tonight, we have two agenda items. Superintendent of Student Support, Mr. Castellanos, and also petition to change, petition of athletic teams in conference. We'll start with Mr. Castellanos. To forward yours. Brian?
Thank you Chairman, not Ford. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss our topic of choice tonight. I wish I could tell you that tonight's athletic remarks would be off the cut, but it's not. I have actually prepared and took some notes. And I take that from, I've learned this skill from our Dr. Tutwiler. I love in his communication reports, I did pick this one up. So please be advised that, you know, I'm going to share some of the work that I've been doing the past few weeks on this issue and in respect to my constituents. So again, happy instead, I have prepared tonight's remarks, which include student voice, parents, coaches, and concerned Lynn residents. The inability to engage in athletics have left a devastating blow to our student athletes, social, emotionally, academically, and just having overall huge impact. It is vital that we recognize and validate our students during these trying times. Thank you Superintendent Tutwiler again, and your team for your continued support during these unprecedented times. Thank you Mayor and Chief of Staff Ennis for keeping open communication with me prior to tonight's meeting. Thank you to, thank you and huge shout out to Coach Antonio Anderson from Lynn English and Coach Mackenzie Charles for your advocacy regarding this matter and really bringing this to the forefront, connecting me to the many constituents and students who have been impacted by this. And thank you to my colleagues on the Athletic Subcommittee for reaching out and just really working this issue from the grassroots. Again, tonight's athletic discussion drills home with me. If it wasn't for athletics, I would be imprisoned to death. My freshman year of high school, I experienced a series of traumas that would change my life forever. I entered what I would consider the dead years of my life. There would be days I would wake up not wanting to live, and nights that I went to sleep hoping I wouldn't wake up. My grades dropped, my drive was non-existent, and I could not bear the emotional pain I lived with. Luckily, by God's grace, I had the game of football as an outlet to cope with my mental health struggles. It was my coaches from Lynn English High School that instilled the courage in me to fight through adversity and overcome my struggles with the positive mindset. Peter Holy, Brian Vaughn, Gary Malaya, Freddie Hogan, Paul Holy, and the late Coach Billy Dutch. I'll never forget what you did for me. And tonight is the real testament of what I say full circle. It is my obligation as an elected official and school committee member to ensure we consistently, I am going to say consistently, activate and include youth voices in city and state decision-making policies. I have received numerous letters from student athletes across the district sharing their experiences. These letters have compelled me to take action and provide them with the platform to share their story.
Mackenzie Asavido from Lynn English. Dear school committee members, my name is Mackenzie. I am a seventeen-year-old and I'm a junior at Lynn English High, High School. As you already know, 2020 has been one of the most challenging years that everyone is going through with all these ups and downs. My basketball team found out that we might not have a season this year. I personally came to Lynn to play basketball at LEHS because it is a good team to be playing for, and I want to be a part of that. However, I got, I got one year with playing with my school team and I'm asking you to not take away our season. Basketball is a huge part of my life, but also for the student athletes as well, as well. We work day in and day out to be the best basketball players we can be, and we do all that work to go to waste. The game of basketball might be just a game to many people, but to us athletes, basketball is so much more. It is a way for us to escape the negativity that we, that we may be going through our personal life, and it helps us to cope with it all through the game. This sport for me is important because it helps me to cope with my anxiety and all the stress that sometimes occurs in my life. Playing on the court with my teammates and being in an environment where I can forget about everything, it is amazing. And a lot of athletes rely on their sports, and in this case, it's basketball, because it is what we look forward to in our futures. And many students really rely on their junior year of high school to play basketball so they can get noticed by colleges and earn scholarships for the sport. The game is not just for the high school fund, but it becomes a livelihood for some. With all this being said, I greatly ask you to make the decision of allowing my teammates and I and other basketball teams to have our season, your student athlete, Mackenzie. And I want to thank Mackenzie for sharing that letter, she is on tonight. Again, this is, I have had, I have a load of student letters, I'm not going to go through all of them, but it's vital to highlight their voices. Our student athletes are struggling mentally, academically, and emotionally without sports. There's clear disparities among other districts that we, you know, we'll go into the discussion. Some of my questions are the following. And I know we have the athletic, I know Bill Devon, Athletic Director Devon and Newton, they're all on the call tonight. And I guess my questions could be directed towards them as well, or the superintendent's team, but what can we do to support our athletes emotionally and physically? And when I say physically, I mean in the sense of allowing access for our athletes to practice, run drills, and allow facility availability. And my next piece is really going to be towards, I guess, the athletic directors. How are we planning to adjust to the new MIAA regulations? Could we have the athletic directors speak more in depth about these changes during tonight's discussion? And how that impacts our student athletes and families? And also if legally, if we can permit a vote tonight to support moving forward this process, I am in full support to move that forward. And after we get some more clarification of what I mean, if the athletic directors can provide that. Thank you.
I can, I can, I can answer some of those questions, Brian. First of all, thank you for that very passionate speech. I appreciate that. But going back to, we got, we got to back up a little bit here. This all, this all started last March. And, you know, our, you know, the safety things and everything that, you know, we're still going through a lot of stuff, but with, with our spring teams last year, all the kids that were supposedly supposed to play spring sports didn't have that opportunity, especially the seniors. Fast forward to fall, and we've been lucky enough to get some help. Our league kind of turned its nose at us after an original vote of nine zero to three. We thought that we were going to move everything to fall too, meaning football, volleyball, soccer, golf, et cetera. The Greater Boston League stepped up and put us in that position to, for our kids to compete. So barring, barring anything else, we were supposed to play that season from February into April. But as far as, as far as the winter goes, I've talked to all of my coaches, I talk to Dicky just about every day, I talk to Amy all the time. Here's my thought, and I'm just, I'm just going to throw this out here. Why, I'm going to pose this question to you. Why can't we play a winter season that doesn't involve playing in our facilities? For example, the Road Warriors. Every single one of my coaches, Marvin Avery, Tom Sawyer, they all said absolutely. And any schedule that we have, Brian, and the winter is going to be abbreviated anyway. So my thought is this, let's look at building a twelve-game schedule for basketball, for hockey. Let's take a look at our swim, our track, let's take a look at everything and just say, okay, we're going to build the schedule and we're going to, we're going to go to all of these away venues. Just like St. Mary's did. St. Mary's, which is in Lynn, just had a, just completed or is about to complete their fall season. That's all our kids are looking for. Our kids are looking for an opportunity. The MIA has already canceled the winter tournaments. There is no state tournament, all right? And we're also now looking at the original start date, which is November thirtieth. We're talking about maybe moving this thing, the winter season, until after Christmas. That gives everybody more time to digest all of the mandates that are coming out. The MIA hasn't even come out yet with the modifications for each sport. Those are supposed to come out later this week or next week. So I think that everybody has to think outside of the box for our kids. Like, I get it, like, we're all learning remotely, but every kid that I talk to in my Zoom classes, there, there, there's other issues going on. The kids are, they're losing interest, they need something to do, they're on the screen, they're off the screen, and, you know, everything's, they need athletics. And I don't have to preach to the choir how important athletics is. And, you know, even, I'm even going through it with my own son, daughter you mentioned. I got four kids, my, my last son is a senior, he's the captain of the hockey team. He asks me every day, Dad, am I, am I going to be able to play hockey? And I just, I keep trying to stay positive, and I'm like, geez Matthew, I don't know. I hope so, I hope you can have some type of a season. So I don't know if Dicky wants to chime in, but those are the main things. I think we can look at playing a season away. I don't think there, and Dicky will tell you, the GBL said even if schools in the league that we're in now, we're not willing to play Lynn because we're a community in the red, the Greater Boston League said that they would make a basketball and a hockey schedule and everything else for us this winter.
Yeah, to add on that, you know, I talked to some of my kids, and they've been playing since March as a, as a group of kids. They've been playing in New Hampshire, they've been playing all around, and they've been playing games, and they've been together as a group. So it's not like they haven't been playing anything, just not inside the school. And, you know, I'd hate to see this turn into an AAU grab for these guys because they're going to play regardless, and I think the safest place for them to play is with their coaches and with us. And even if we had a couple of home games, we could still, when they come out with the modifications, you could still have no fans, you could have all the protocols in place. We have a, I sent out a list of protocols and modifications just that, that we made up that would make it a lot easier. And they're doing this to get kids into school, and even if you're in the red, you know, not like, unlike the fall, when you're in the red in the fall, you're automatically out. It's not the case anymore, and I'd like to see us take advantage of it. I mean, you know, Billy and I talk every day and we're here for the kids, and they text you and call you and, you know, they, they really want to get out there. And I, you know, whether it's, you know, safety of course is, you know, first number one thing, but I'd like to see us make an effort to try and get the kids out on the court, not in the fields.
I just, I'd like to bring up a point. I, through Rob Smith, that we looked into even maybe possibly having a flag football Thanksgiving Day team between Classical and English, St. Mary's and Tech, just to have something. You know, something they could practice a week or two for, and then at least have it in, you know, that, that didn't fly. So I mean, it's, it's really tough. Billy, if you push the basketball back into, you say into like December?
No, like after, you know, the governor was concerned about Thanksgiving and Christmas with all the families gathering. It would be, it would be more or less, John, after, after New Year's. And it would still, it would still give us ample time to have a season because now the wedge season, the fall, the fall two season doesn't start until February twenty-second. And the MIA has already gone on record saying they're not going to go past that date. So whatever we, whatever we do would have to be done between.
Six weeks.
Correct. We're only, we're only going to play, we're only going to play a max of eleven games. That's the maximum amount of games that we'll, we'll be able to play. And that could even be downturned to less, because we're going to end up playing eight games. So, and during the fall, when, when schools had a COVID bump up, or they, they had a problem, they just delayed their season for a week and then went back into it. Saguas was a perfect example, they started in the red, went to the yellow, went back to the red, and they, they just chugged along until they could limp, limp through the seasons. But they made it, and I talked to their athletic director, and she was very, very happy with the season, the way it went for her.
Michael, what would this be something we have to petition, the MIAA?
Oh yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to follow the guidance, and I was, I was taking a look at it in Dr. Tutwiler's office today. There's almost two sets of guidance, and looking at it with him, there's the EEA guidance that I'm sure some of you have heard about, and then it's just a matter of having the, the MIA and DESI adopt those, those guidelines. And I'm sure there's, you know, I'm sure there's going to be more to come before we get into the, before we get into the winter season.
Can I, can I, they're going to, each sport committee meets this week, and the sport committees come up with a set of modifications. And then the modifications go through the Sports Medicine Committee, which then goes to the COVID nineteen Task Force, which then goes to the Board of Directors to ratify. So the, so the, the modifications that the sports committees come up with are on top of what the EEA has already established. So, you know, the, the EEA is what the state requires. The sports modifications from the, from the different committees is what we're probably going to go by because they're above and beyond what the EEA comes up with.
Mr. Ford, when you got a chance?
It's good. Jared?
Yeah, thank you so much. I want to thank Member Castellanos for the, for the presentation and for sharing those remarks. I've also heard from a lot of students and coaches and parents on this issue, and really appreciate their reaching out and their passion, testimonial to the, to the importance of athletics. And thank you also for the principals who are joining us tonight, and the athletic directors, Newton and Devon. Thank you guys for, for coming and sharing that. I just want to express my full support for finding a way to do this safely. We all want to put safety first, I think everybody shares that as a priority. If there's a way to do it safely, we owe it to these students to find a way to do it. And it sounds like the EEA believes there's a way to do it safely. They've issued guidelines to say how to do it. It's going to be happening, it's going to be happening at schools in Lynn, it's going to be happening at schools right next to Lynn. And what has troubled me a little bit about the way this has been rolled out this fall is that they've taken what should be a public health issue and tried to treat athletics as a carrot. And that is an unacceptable use of the MIAA's power to try to make a political point about what should be happening at the district level. If we, if the goal is purely public health, then we need to prioritize public health and make best decisions for each student and the teacher in the situation that they're in. And if there's a way to do sports safely, there's no reason to block that because of what, something else is happening on an unrelated issue. And I think now that we're in, we're in this moment of the MIAA formulating, interpreting that guidance from the EEA, now is the time to, to, to reach out to them and to communicate that this is what we're, we're seeing and what we're hearing. The, the, remote, but remote learning doesn't mean we're not studying, doesn't mean that, that students are no longer student athletes. Of course it does. And you can't recreate the athletic experience remotely, otherwise we would. And the, the, if it's safe enough for other kids to do it, then it's, then we need to find a way to make it safe for us to do it. Athletic Director Newton mentioned, and Athletic Director Devon mentioned playing games away, which, which to me makes sense if there's a concern about our facilities. I'm sure that students and coaches would also be very willing to get the level, the amount of testing that they would need in order to monitor any kind of issues, which I think would go a long way in assuaging a lot of the public health concerns. And so if we can get that level of confidence in the ability to do this safely, I think we have to do it.
John, may I speak up now?
Oh yeah, Lorraine?
Yeah, I'm noticing this idea, and I'm, and I'm thinking to myself that it's, it's in January, so, and it would be a shortened version. And Dr. Tutwiler, correct me if I'm wrong, but it does fall in line with when you were thinking in January to bring back some, some students into our buildings, weren't you in January?
Right, that's what's proposed.
So this, the concerning thing, I'm sure Coach, not Coach Devon, but Mr. Devon, you know, like, we just got a report today that there were eighty-seven new cases in Lynn today, and we're up to eight hundred and sixty-two, so that's always in the back of our minds. But I'm hoping that this peak goes up and then it drops down after the holidays, and I would be backing this. I would say, yeah, let's try to get this if it's okay with the MIAA and Dr. Tutwiler's input. Because you know more, and Michael, Gary, and Dicky Newton, you all know what's going on. But there's a lot of other students also that would like to do their thing. But I think this is important, and if this is the way we can do this, then let's, let's do it if that's possible, Dr. Tutwiler. What's your opinion on this?
Uh, my opinion is that I, we've made a proposal, you know, in our last meeting, October twenty-ninth, to provide in-person services for the group of students whose needs we struggle to meet the most. And that, quite frankly, has been our primary focus at present. Athletics is extremely important, and I'm a former student athlete, and I know the role that it plays in students' lives. And I know that the impact it can have, not just on the students or the school, but on the community as a whole. And so I'm in support of, you know, creating a pathway where it can happen safely. I would just say definitively, and I appreciate what Mr. Devon said about, you know, both Lynn is thinking and potentially the membership GBL, they're thinking that this would happen at some point in January. That would align with the existing joint MIAA, the guidance which calls for schools who are both in red communities and for remote, to postpone their season. In mid-January, we would no longer be for remote. So I feel like we would be, you know, in good stead to begin thinking about how we can make that happen safely. I will say, you know, with each week, there's, there's something new. And so inasmuch as Billy and Dicky are waiting for updated MIA guidance around the individual sports, I equally anticipate some additional guidance in joint fashion from DESI and the MIAA around, you know, what their expectations are for districts that they plan to participate.
John? Michael?
Oh, sorry.
Michael, go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I just don't want to forget, you know, the, the work that we've been doing as a school committee over the past couple of years. One of the things that we, we did, and we had the principal come in and talk about the school unity. And she, she talked about just this, different things that the school would do to, to build up a positive school relationship between the students and the teachers. I think sports are a key component to that same unity. I think that it brings the students together. I think that it brings a, a sense of togetherness to the school. My daughter played in the elementary basketball league when she went to Lynn Woods, and it was great. You know, we would go to games and do stuff together. So I, I think that it's, 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 it's going to have an impact by the fact that we didn't have kids in school. In addition to that, we, we, we weren't playing any sports or anything for the kids to continue to build relationships with adults and with other students. So the quicker we can get these things going, the better. I'm all for it, because again, it's a key component to what we're trying to do for each of our schools where we're trying to bring a sense of unity within those. Thank you.
I can't be seen, so I'll just be heard. Quickly, what do we do, where do we go from here, Dr. Tutwiler? Do we petition the MIA, or do we?
If I, if I could speak, John?
Oh, Mayor McGee?
Thank you. I appreciate Member Castellanos, and I, I played sports in high school and prep school as a student athlete. I just want to reflect where we're at, and I'm not clear on the Greater Boston League, what communities are ready to actually jump into sports. I'm just going to go from the last week's numbers from the two previous weeks. Four hundred and eighty-six new cases, thirty-four point four per hundred thousand, and a positivity rate of six point five three. As of tonight, six hundred and thirty-six new cases in the two weeks from going back from today. Forty-five point one per hundred thousand cases in Lynn. Positivity rate of seven point four eight percent. Those are very grim and dire numbers. We're in the top handful of communities facing this, and we need to understand that the tough decisions that we are making and are trying to make and trying to keep people safe are also reflected in what are the right decisions we need to make. And I know Revere is struggling, Lawrence and other communities are seeing this. This is exploding, these numbers are exploding, and are really impacting our ability to get back to normal. So I don't disagree with anything that's been said tonight, but I don't think we're ready at this point to say where we're going to go. I think it needs to be a broader discussion. We're talking about testing the athletes, that's a good first step. We was on a call today with Dr. Scott Pino with about fifteen years from Northeastern. And the question was asked, well, how come Northeastern University is, is really low in terms of the infection rate? They test everyone at the school every three days, and if they find that they're positive, they immediately isolate them on campus in a room. So the question I would have is, would the students, we're going to test them? Are they going to be isolating themselves from other contacts in our community, which is what's going on with community spread? So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered related to this. So again, I'm not, I'm not trying to say anything that's been said tonight is not real or that I don't understand what's, what's being said. But I think we need to, we also need to take a look at what's going on in the community, the cases that are happening, and what we need to do if we are going to move forward on this because it really is an impact across the board. So, Dr. Tutwiler, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, I'm not sure that there really is an actionable this evening. And Member Castellanos can keep me honest here. I think my sense was the idea was to elevate the voices of students and families around the issues related around, you know, not participating. Really, for us, it's a, it's a bit of a, I mean, a waiting game. There's still guidance coming out. We'll get clarity around that. There's another agenda item this evening to sort of help us formally, you know, make a shift to a different conference. And Mayor, just to reiterate what you said, I can say definitively that, you know, at least two of the GBL schools, Chelsea and Higbert are deeply in the red. I don't know that they're, they may be looking, you know, at fall two at the earliest for their, their first return to the sport. So, you know, these sorts of things, I don't, I don't know that there's an actionable this evening other than to elevate student and family voice and express our uniform, you know, support for those, for those voices.
I just, can I, I have a question, so I'm not sure Member Ford can see me.
I can see you. I can see you, you just can't see me.
Okay, even better. So just kind of going back to what the mayor said. So the data, I know we said six hundred new cases total, or, sorry, I might, it broke up, but what are the age brackets for that? And what, what for my, for, for, I guess, for moving forward, can athletics directors or Mr. Gary, someone point out there, is there a feature that in a vote, in the scope of a vote tonight, as a school committee as a whole, do we make a motion to support Superintendent Tutwiler in there in the athletic operation? Do we have to, sorry, that might be from Attorney Miles, but do we bring that to the, a, a, a committee as a whole? Do we bring it out? So I don't know if it ends right now, I don't know. So I'm just a little, a little concerned about that. Because I have, obviously, we have a lot of folks that are texting me now through our live feed that, you know, that they have some concerns around, also the question about, not to call out Catholic leagues, but we have St. John's Prep, St. Mary's, there's some different guidelines. There's some red tape that, there needs to be some clarification on why certain cities, and I understand the numbers, we get the numbers, but there's just, needs to be some clarity about why that is. Clear? Is that clear?
Yep, I I can answer that. Um St. Mary's, St. John's Prep, all the Catholics aren't under the guise of Desi, so they're on in a whole different scope. Um you you would, in order to for us to be able to participate in winter sports, uh if we're in the red and if we're in remote, you need the superintendent, a vote from the school committee and uh Department of Public Health in local. So those are the three things you need in order to participate. And on um the Revere and Chelsea issue, um there was a meeting today for the GBL. And Revere and Chelsea both come out clearly and stated that um they were not even gonna consider playing until January one and then they're gonna uh further investigate and and see how their situation was. So now in the GBL then discussed whether or not they were gonna go forward and play in the uh in the winter season too.
Well, Mr. Newton, so just to clarify that, so you would need a a a vote to support the conversation for January first? To just even get into conversations?
Yeah, the date, the date is is, the MIA has made it clear that the your dates for all seasons fluctuate. Um you know, the winter season, you can start anytime, the the league can vote to decide anytime what it is. Same thing with fall two, fall two, you know, we, this discussion is always, can golf be played in the wintertime? No, you can start golf anytime you want or you can move it. You can shuffle things around because there are no state tournaments. So um I would, we have a meeting next Thursday, the Northeastern Conference ADs. Um and since we're still playing in in um in the Northeast Conference for the winter, um we're gonna decide then whether or not what the starting date is. So I would imagine it's not gonna be November thirtieth. I imagine it's gonna be pushed, but we don't know yet, this whole thing.
Mr. Fortkrasper, question?
Yeah, Jared.
Thank you. Um I think I wanna thank the mayor for for uh reminding us of the the current uh statistics. I think that's really important to keep in mind. Um my my question is, and what I'm not understanding about what the MIA's guidance is, why, and and this I guess is for anyone, maybe Dr. Tutwiler, um why why would our decision, I understand why we wanna pay attention to the data, make a good public health decision about athletics. Why is that determined by the decision we make about the high, the three hundred and fifty highest needs students? I don't understand what the connection is there.
Um I I'm going off of the August eighteenth joint uh guidance, MIA and Desi, which says that school schools that are in districts, that are in the in communities in the red and full remote, full remote, which is key, must postpone their season if they are in the red and full remote at the beginning of the season. Um in January, we would not be for remote.
Uh we would. Thank you, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
That's it.
No, and and thank you, that that, so I mean, maybe an action item is to ask the MIA to revisit that. Cause if that's the case and we we're setting up a season that we think could be done safely. Now, could be done safely is key. I I I absolutely support the mayor in trying to make, to put public health first and make sure this is happening safely. But if we think that we could have a season done safely on, starting on January fourth because students are getting tested, we're playing away, the the uh numbers are down, whatever it is, and we're not inviting students back until January nineteenth, I don't understand why we need to wait for two weeks.
So I don't, you know, the a- a- again, we're in a context where where things are changing pretty regularly and uh what uh Mr. Newton just shared about what needs to be done. I, you know, I've been going back and forth on email. I've not seen anything in writing just yet from MIAA or Desi that says specifically uh if you want to start a sports season, all you need is superintendent support, school committee vote, uh things of that. I've not seen that. Uh I'm not saying that that's not true. I just haven't seen it in writing. Um and so that would be the thing that would need to happen to, you know, if it's true and I and 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 we can confirm it in writing, that'd be the thing that would need to happen uh in order for January to start.
Mr. Tutwiler?
Yes, um, sorry. I uh I have I have called the MIA a couple of times, talked to a fellow by the name of Phil Napolitano, who was the District Five rep, who was our league rep. And um and I asked him clearly, just what Dr. Tutwiler said, is is that what we need? And he said, yes. I says, well, can I have it in writing? And he hesitated. So then I asked our district chair from, and he's the chair from Walden, and he, I asked him, can you put this in writing? Is is this true? And he said, it is true, just that it hasn't been established yet because it just changed. So, you know, that's what we're getting. It it it's it's very vague. But that they were, they were pretty clear that, yes, you can play if you have those three things in line. And and, you know, I'm taking them for their word uh because they they write the rules, basically. Um and without without a uh a tournament, the TMC and and these other um committees uh don't really matter. It's the this, it's the districts that make the decisions. And the District Five Chair has has said that we can play. And the District Five Chair rep, Philip Altono, said that you could play if you're in the red, full remote, as long as you get the three okays.
Well, I just have a, so so Attorney Miles, is 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 are you on the call?
I'm right here, yeah.
Would would it be possible to authorize, well, my suggestion would be to authorize a superintendent? So like you said, I I agree, Dr. Tutwiler, we don't have that in writing, but to give you the authorization with with the, obviously, the support, if we put up to vote to authorize the superintendent to go ahead with that, to support that, I guess we put it up to a vote. Cause I would more to, if if we do get that in writing, I I do support that and I I I would support that. So if we have, especially with safety, public health in mind, as Attorney Nicholson Metzen, and and obviously the the mayor's support, and and he he and we we work together on this to to bring it to fruition. I I just feel, I feel like we, I do trust Dr. Tutwiler would be able to have the authority. Would that be something that we could do?
You could do that. Dr. Tutwiler, Dr. Tutwiler, to look into the situation. And do what is necessary.
I would.
Mr. Mayor?
I I would suggest, and I would suggest that we have more information to get, obviously. And taking a vote at this point on whether or not we do it, it does, we we have done a lot of special meetings if we determine we wanna go in this direction. But I have a lot of questions related to the public health side of it, as well as what the MIAA actually is going to do. I don't think that they, which is my opinion, I don't think they've dealt fairly throughout this in terms of how it relates to cities like Lynn. How the red communities have been negatively impacted and not even had a voice in this this process. Not saying it would have changed anything in the fall sports. Uh but I think it's um, I think it's something that does, you know, what are the, what direction are we going? What are the pu- public health consequences? And how do we take a serious look at this based on what we need to do to actually even entertain getting into it? And I think Chelsea and Revere are probably facing the same challenges. Uh talking about they're not even looking till January one because they're they're in the same place we are in terms of the, you know, the the cases going up. I've had discussions with the town administrator, as well as the mayor of those communities, mayor of Lawrence and other communities that are in this situation. And we're all struggling to find the right, the right direction to go, recognizing the impact on students. But just as importantly, understanding that we need to, we need to do the right thing on the pub- health, public health side. So uh that's just my.
For the sake of the, for the sake of the decency, should we table it tonight and then meet again at the next school committee meeting?
John, can I just ask one more question?
Michael?
Thank you. Uh Patrick, uh i- i- the, is the flu shot requirement, i- is that a requirement for a student to go back into the school building?
It's a requirement whether you are remote or uh in person.
Okay. So I I think that that's something that um we should also look into then for the students to make sure that they're compliant with it because um what if they're not and and we're setting up all this stuff and we might not have the the students to play, especially with the shortage of the flu vac- vaccination. Um uh so that's something that we also need to keep in the back of our mind aside from COVID. Um you know, obviously, if that's a requirement, who knows if if the student athletes are even compliant with that aspect, because I know that there's an issue with a lot of the students uh complying with it right now.
If I if I may really quickly, uh um Mr. Ford, I I know you can't see me, but um there is a way for the district to, there's a database, uh state database that captures um flu shot vaccinations and, you know, our 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 nursing department has a way to to verify.
Okay, so and I would just, I I, the reason why I'm bringing that up is for the athletic directors to to talk to the coaches to make sure that they, that their student athletes know, hey, if if you, if if we're going forward with this, aside from COVID and the procedures with, you know, to say safe with regards to COVID, you still need a flu shot.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Michael. Um as you, as everybody knows, all of our student athletes have to submit an updated physical uh in order to play and that physical has to come from a reputable doctor and that physical is good for thirteen months. And the MIA did recently say that under the circumstances, they are still gonna hold up that um requirement that every student athlete that's playing now, whether it's in the fall, winter, or spring, is gonna have to have a physical. And that could certainly uh be an amendment, Michael, that we could make within our athletic programs that proof of a flu shot would also be required um along with that physical.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there a grid that we we table this tonight uh and already on the agenda for the next meeting as well?
Uh, so so I would like to go back with to my previous um conversation around putting up to authorize a vote. So I and I respect, I have respect with the mayor, uh you know, his input. But I feel like the athletic directors have a good handle on this. I feel like if we could collaborate together, I feel like that would be something that I would like to have, you know, the superintendent be part of and to put up for a vote. So i- i- if I if I'm wrong, I feel like if if we, we, what, so we're gonna be also changing our next school committee meeting. We're not, we won't meet till December. So then we're gonna have less time to plan versus if they're gonna meet next, is is that correct? ADs, they're gonna be meeting next week or what's the timeframe?
We're meeting next Thursday, the nineteenth.
More beneficial to vote on it tonight or or wait on it? I would, I'd like to hear from the perspective of the guys who are gonna be on the ground. And Mr. Gary, too, chime in if you need.
Well, it it depends really, when when we, when we, the ADs sit and talk when they push, if they push the season back. If it's November thirtieth, then it's tight, but if they push it back till after Christmas, you got pl- you got plenty of time.
Right.
Could I make a suggestion here? May- maybe, maybe it'd be helpful. Maybe one way to do this, to move this forward is to, is to vote for authorization for the superintendent to request uh formal clarification from the MIAA in writing as to what the uh requirements would be for a district such as Lynn to be able to have a winter season.
In the form of a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Second, uh all in favor? Hi. And we bring it to the full committee?
Right.
Okay, wanna move on um to the second item on the athletic subcommittee? The uh the concept of moving um both classical and English into the GBL.
Yes, hi, hi, everybody. Dr. Tutwiler is gonna share my, um I have a brief PowerPoint to kind of explain the reasoning for the request for the move for Lynn Classical and Lynn English to the Greater Boston League. Uh just to give you a little bit of background, this isn't something that, you know, came upon us recently. There's been a lot of talks of of Lynn Classical in Lynn English uh making this move. And as Athletic Director Newton and Devon were talking about earlier, coincidentally, we are gonna play with them in in Fall Two, uh them being the GBL because of the fact that some of the Northeast Conference schools, in fact, most of them played in Fall One. So we did feel that it was timely that we kind of brought this back to the table and talked about the the move for approval to move Lynn Classical and Lynn English to the Greater Boston League. And as I mentioned, Dr. Tutwiler, Deputy Rogero, the athletic directors, the principal, and I sat in a meeting last week and we discussed the pros and the cons of the move and 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 we do feel like this is the best decision for us moving forward. And I'm gonna briefly outline some of the reasons for you and then I'm sure the athletic directors can give you some more details as we get into it. Uh the main reason for the move is to improve competitive balance in many sports. Now, remember, when I say the word competitive balance, that means we want, our goal is to compete and be quote unquote close, have close games in every sport. It doesn't mean that we wanna move from the Northeast Conference to the Greater Boston League because we think it gives us a better chance to win championships in every sport. Our goal for competitive is to have competitive balance because if you're in close games and it's more competitive, your participation rate's gonna increase. And I think we'd all agree, that's that's pretty much our, that's one of the biggest goals that we have. Um as I mentioned, classical and English have been struggling to compete in the majority of sports in the Northeast Conference. Of course, there's there's certain sports that we've, we have a history of being strong in, we're still very strong. Um but there are a lot that have fallen off a little bit as far as participation rates that have hurt us in competitions. Just briefly, the reasons for us for struggling to compete, uh we have lower sports participation rate compared to a lot of the other Northeast Conference schools. And again, going through the reasons, probably not a big surprise to a lot of people. Many of our student athletes need to work or care for family members after school and they're unfortunately not able to take part in athletics. Um looking at some of the other schools in the Northeast Conference, um we don't have as many youth programs and theater systems in a variety of our sports compared to the NEC schools. Now, before I go on, we have some fabulous youth programs in the city that are great theater program. But for a lot of the other sports that might not maybe be as high profile, not having those feeding, those theater and youth programs rarely hurt us as far as our participation once we get to high school. Um and again, moving along, the the Greater Boston schools, we expect um are gonna be a better demographic fit for us compared to the NEC schools. The current GBL schools, as we mentioned already, Everett, Revere, Somerville, Midford, Walden, Chelsea. Our athletic directors think that we're gonna have just a natural fit with these schools and be, when I say competitive, be in a lot closer games that are gonna kind of increase our participation um as we go along. Uh moving along, I do wanna, you know, touch upon it. One of, when we spoke, one of the the drawbacks was that we were worried that we might lose a little bit of tradition by leaving the NEC. I believe the, if if I'm saying this right, uh Bill Devon told me it's been fifty years that we've been in the Northeast Conference. It's important to note that a lot of um our non-conference games, we can schedule those traditional NEC rivals in a variety of sports, so we could still play the the Swampskits, the Marbleheads, the Beverly's and non-league um games. State tournaments aren't affected by this and of course, we still have the longstanding traditions such as the Thanksgiving football game, the Boverini tournament and a ton of the the Lynn citywide tournaments that the athletic directors can certainly talk about um better than I can, won't be affected by this move. Um but again, we feel like the the biggest thing is is competitive balance. Finally, just the the, we talked in the meeting about the vision for Lynn Public Schools Athletics, three to five years in the future. We think that this move will allow us to increase our athletic participation, which is, which is obviously probably the biggest goal that we have for our sports program for reasons that I don't have to go and tell you about, especially the girls programs, which the athletic directors both said, not all the programs, but a good chunk of them have been struggling as far as 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 far as like competitive balance that I talked about. Uh without this move, we we do project three to five years. If we don't make this move, our student participation in athletics would decrease, which which is definitely something we don't want. Um this move, we think could maybe open up some different sports programs that could be offered. And we also think, as I mentioned, that this move would allow our student athletes to have an opportunity to compete in closer games and not, um you know, not have one-sided affairs with the athletic directors. Can tell you better than I can that that has been the case recently. Um so again, that's really just a snapshot. If you have any specific questions as far as, you know, reasoning for why we're suggesting the move, feel free to uh to let me know and show the ADs can provide specifics.
All right, we are now five minutes beyond our time. We're into the regular school committee meeting. And I think what I, I want to entertain a motion for a vote. I have no problem. I know where my vote's going, so.
Can I, can I just say something really quick?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna, I I just wanna thank you for the presentation. The reasoning makes sense. Uh I appreciate everyone's work on this. I have heard from some constituents about the concern about the loss of tradition. So I appreciate your point about being able to schedule Saturday league games. And I'm sure people will respect those libraries that that are longstanding and and um maintain that is 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 a great way to uh to do that with non-league games. So glad that that's an option. And so I I'm absolutely supporting.
Thanks.
Motion?
I think, so I was gonna, so just a quick, uh thank you for your presentation as well. I do appreciate the clarity and the traditional, um you can set those non-conference, I I do. Cause I know Swampscout Lynn, that's always a big one. Folks, the very uh, the right next door, it's always a good, uh, it's a long time, fifty years. right next door, it's always a good, uh, it's a long time, fifty years is a long time, so I think I, I do respect my constituents who have reached out, also voiced that, um, and I, 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 I would entertain the motion, so I, I could put a motion out there.
Give us a motion. Brian, give a motion. Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
And Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, we will move that to the full committee. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to vote. Second.
Second, motion adjourned, meeting is over. I'm gonna try logging out and see if I can log back in again.
Welcome, Mayor.
How are you, Donna?
Very good, thank you.
Looking to see if um, you know, the members have signed on from the subcommittee meeting?
Okay.
I don't see um, I don't see member Ford yet. See member Castellanos is here, are you here, Brian?
All right, I'm here.
Sorry. I'll look over John Ford.
He has, oh, he's coming now.
Right now.
I'm here, I still can't get the uh, the picture.
Are you clicking the um video?
I'm clicking everything.
Okay.
All right. We're um. Yeah, John. All here, I'd just like to ask um, uh, where are you, welcome to the seventeenth regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee, I'd like to ask Neon if she would please confirm all the members and those other persons anticipated on the agenda are here and present.
Okay, um, Mr. Cassianus?
Present.
Mr. Caporal?
Present.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Mr. Stadley?
Present.
Mr. Matheson?
Present.
Sally?
Present.
Managie?
Present.
And we are having um Ms. Powers, Deputy Superintendent Powers, Ms. Rogero.
Present.
Um, Don Hossi, um, Mayor Jerry, and um, Mary Jewels.
Present.
All here.
And Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. Uh, again, um, this is Mayor Tom McGee, and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the city website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via the Zoom platform, as posted on the city's website and on the Lynn School, Public Schools website. Additionally, this meeting can be viewed on the local cable channels, Channel Three for Comcast and Channel Thirty Seven for Verizon. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and to take care not to share, uh, screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by this recording. We're not, um, will be, get ready to um turn to the first item of the agenda, but before I, I wanna cover some ground rules for the meeting. As chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of numbers, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any reason, uh, for any response, uh, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. Members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted via roll call. With that, um, I would like to begin the meeting, and uh, I know that there was a flag, uh, Dawn has a flag that is available on the screen in the, in the um meeting room. I'd ask everyone to stand and join me in salute to the United, flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd ask that you stay, uh, stand with me and join me in a moment of silence for Stephen Winterstein, he was a retired teacher who passed away on May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty, Edith Anderson, retired nurse on October sixteenth of twenty twenty, and Sharon McGlynn, a former teacher who passed away on October sixteenth of twenty twenty. I ask that you join me in a moment of silence in, in the memory. Thank you. First on the agenda is appointments and elections. Dr. Tutwiler, would you uh um work us through those uh appointments and elections, please?
Glad to, Mayor.
Like more, more appointments, it looks like, but please, thank you. Please, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah, glad to. Uh, there are four this evening, uh, three of which uh are related to the party, so to speak, these were appointments that occurred, uh, two of which, uh, back in September, uh, and then one more recent one, but I, I wanna congratulate uh all three PC Land technicians, critical role uh in, you know, both launching and maintaining our uh remote learning uh effort, that is Anthony Dominguez, Edward Gardett, and Jonathan Kotsakis. Uh, congratulations to, to them and welcome to the Lynn. And then finally, uh, a fourth appointment, uh, an individual not new uh to the Lynn Public Schools, uh, Kurt Barcalow, for many years, was a science teacher extraordinaire at uh Fecto, uh, has now moved into an acting role as assistant director of curriculum for science, uh, so we welcome him to that role uh in an acting capacity, doing a great job so far.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, we definitely wel- welcome all of those uh to the team, and it's great to have them onboard. Thank you. Uh, next on the um agenda is presentation, uh Leap for Education. Dr. Tutwiler and Linda Saris, I do see Linda here, welcome Linda, good to see you.
Nice to see you, Mayor.
Uh, if I may, really quickly, um, geez, this had to be uh right before I became superintendent. I don't remember exactly when, uh, Linda, but the two of us sat down for coffee uh at uh Thousand Hills, uh, and she talked about uh this LEAP program, uh, and I just thought to myself, boy, this, this is a program that we have to have uh for our students in the Lynn Public Schools. Um, we continue to uh expand and build upon after-school programming, uh, such an important aspect of uh certain engagement uh for our students, and uh this is a, a relatively new program, and we thought it appropriate to share with the community, uh, and to the, with the committee, an update on how this program is going, which has largely been uh virtual, uh, given the timing. But uh with us this evening uh is Linda, uh Hillary Cop, who is actually my neighbor, uh, and uh Wanta uh as well, and so I'm gonna share my screen, I've got a PowerPoint, just to sort of bring you up to date as to who they are and what they're up to. One second.
Yes, earlier today, my uh computer decided that it was uh going to slow down to a crawl, and I was afraid with that PowerPoint, it would be difficult, so Pat graciously agreed to share it off of his computer.
Happy to drive. One second.
I also have to say that I've, I met Mayor McGee several years ago when he chaired the after-school, out-of-school time committee, and I know he's a huge advocate of after-school, so when Pat and Mayor McGee both kinda came into office at the same time, I think I attacked you both relatively quickly. So with that, um, thank you, Pat, and um.
We learned about your passion very quickly, uh, more people learned about your passion that I already was well aware of, so good to have you here, Linda.
Yeah, thanks. So, um, we actually came into Lynn uh back in January after we got a grant. Uh, the money uh was to be spent solely on building after-school programs in Lynn, it came from the Wellington Foundation, and we actually started planning for this grant back in January, so we've been in Lynn for almost a year now, it's hard to believe, most of which, of course, was virtual, um, but we had, we got such an amazing welcome from the community, and we were very excited. So we're here today to just share a little bit about the organization, and then um Wanta and Hillary will get a little bit more into the detail of what actually is happening here in Lynn, and a little view into what we're hoping to do going forward. So with that, um, LEAP, let's start with the mission. LEAP's mission is to empower underserved youth to achieve economic and social mobility by cultivating personal educational and career growth. And it's, no time is more important than now when our low, lower income communities are really facing the difficulties of remote learning. Next. So let's take a minute to look at the statistics. In the state of Massachusetts, forty-five thousand high school graduates, that's six out of ten students do not obtain a post-secondary education, and yet the vast majority of jobs in the state do require a degree. So what is happening is this is creating a skills gap that then contributes to a growing wage and opportunity gap, which is a major social equity issue because the students we're talking about here are, are low income, are students of color, so students that LEAP and the Lynn School post-school serve. Closing these gaps is both an economic and social imperative, which is why programs like LEAP are so needed. Next. So let's dive into the programs. LEAP is an acronym for Learn, Explore, Aspire, Pursue. Next. Sorry, I'm gonna have to keep saying next, so Pat knows when. Our comprehensive set of programs allow our youth to learn and explore through interesting academic programs and a lot of project-based learning. Next. And all of our programs provide opportunities for social and emotional development. Next. And then each year, students complete, every year at the end of the year, they'll complete an education and career plan, even our middle schoolers, to lay out their own long-term aspirations and growth, and put in place the pathway to a post-secondary education. Next. And finally, throughout, build social connections is what we call social capital. Next slide. In order to really understand the program, I wanna put a face on it, so say hello to Kelly Santana King. Kelly arrived in Salem, to Salem from the Dominican Republic as an eighth grader. She couldn't speak English, and she and her brother immediately enrolled in Salem's and LEAP's um English language learner program to advance her English skills. Kelly always was a very motivated student from the beginning, and she's seen here, you can't quite see in the background, I, I cropped it out, but that's the cleaning staff cleaning around her, she was always the last one to leave. Uh, next. In tenth grade, her family left, um, left Salem and moved to Lynn, and she enrolled in Lynn, Lynn English. And it was then that I traveled to Lynn with Kelly to register her for high school classes, and I met guidance counselor Molly Cohen, who was the guidance counselor at Lynn English at the time. Who knew that eight years later, Molly and I would be working together at the third grade Marshall School, um, and while she was in Lynn, she continued to travel back in, um, after school to join LEAP's College Success Program. Um, next. Kelly graduated from Lynn English in twenty twelve, and while she was legally in the country, she was not eligible for any federal financial aid. She was an excellent student, um, I think she was pretty much all A's, um, so we worked with her and her family to get Salem State to offer her in-state tuition so her family could afford it, and a, and a scholarship. And so she was able to complete Salem's, two years at Salem State, but then she expressed an interest in engineering, and we provided her with a mentor, a female engineer, and then helped her transfer into the engineering program at Northeastern University on a full scholarship, where she graduated in twenty sixteen with a degree in mechanical engineering. Next. And then, and then next, two next. Okay. Uh, today Kelly's employed as an engineer at Raytheon, um, staying in contact uh with her LEAP advisors, um, mostly to help her navigate through work, difficult workplace um issues. Kelly lives in Lynn still, uh, she's married now, and gives back to the community as a big sister, and is going to school at night at Northeastern for a master's degree in computer science. Next. Well, Kelly's story is certainly compelling, there are so many other LEAP students who shine, uh, and no matter what metric we look at, uh, LEAP's success outcomes are exceeding those of the state. So when you look at post-secondary education, um, our outcomes are sixty percent greater than this, than the state. Persistence rate is uh almost, is twice that of the um, of the state, and then when you look at graduation rates, it's triple. Next. Every year, we engage over four hundred students from middle school through post-secondary graduation, so we stay with them all the way through college or trade school, or wherever they end up post-secondary. Seventy percent of our students are students of color, mostly Latinx, which is, it's mostly, you know, the fastest growing site population segment in Essex County, and almost ninety percent are low income. A third of our students are either current or former English language learners, and our students we serve come from Salem, Pibbity, and Gloucester, and as of July, also from Lynn. Next. We are partnering with the Lynn Public Schools, um, and the staff at Third Good Marshall to provide free summer and after-school programs. Our summer programs start in July, and our after-school programs start in October. So far, we've served fifty-seven students between the two programs, all of them English language learners, and more economically disadvantaged than not only the general Marshall population, but also LEAP's population. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over, you can go to the next slide, Pat, I'm gonna turn it over to Wanta Simchandamani, who is our Lynn site coordinator, um, who's been with us since the spring, and she will take you through the summer program. Take it away, Wanta.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Wanta Simchandamani, I am a current Lynn resident. I attended Breed Middle School, shout out, I see my seventh grade English teacher, Mr. Devon, and, and I am also a proud Rams graduate of Lynn Classical, class of two thousand. Thank you so much for having us, I am so happy to be here tonight. For the first summer of Dream More, we targeted E L students whose efforts to strengthen their English reading, writing, and speaking skills were impacted due to the sudden shutdown of schools. We got the opportunity to meet three amazing and creative teachers at Marshall Middle School and a guidance counselor, who designed a project-based learning experience in which students learned about Lynn by interviewing community leaders, including Dr. Tutwiler, in various fields, and then capturing those interviews into blogs for other newcomers to read. We also incorporated enrichment activities to help build community and relationships among students and staff. Some of our student outcomes included growth in relationships with adults, communication skills, and engagement in learning. Our students got a head start in switching to technology, the use of computers, and virtual learning. This brings us to the fall programming, and I will now turn it over to Hillary.
Uh, next slide, please, I'm Hillary Cop, I'm the director of middle
Uh, next slide, please. I'm Hillary Cop. I'm the Director of Middle School Programs at Leap, and I came on in very end of January in part, in large part, to help build our program in Lynn. And we've gotten it started despite the pandemic, which we're very excited about. Um so since the summer, we have opened our virtual after-school program as of middle of October that operates twice a week for two and a half hours each day. The program includes a lighter project-based learning experience than the summer, since the students are online all day. This fall, students are getting an introduction to new experiences in drama, dance, and fitness. Program time includes help with homework and remote assignments and some game time where students get a chance to connect with peers and have fun. Currently, Kahoot and Hangman are the popular games with them. The students this fall are all English learners as, as they were this summer. In the winter, we plan to expand from two to four cohorts, targeting students in need of greater social, emotional connection and or more academic supports in addition to continuing to serve our, the English learners. Next slide, please. As Linda indicated, we have only been working in Lynn since January, but the welcome has been, we have received has been overwhelming. In February, we all, we invited stakeholders from all over the city to learn about our upcoming program at Third Grade Marshall, and over seventy-five people attended, providing much-needed feedback and input. Looking ahead, we will continue to work with the community and the schools to identify where Lynn, where Leap might add new or expanded programs, be it at TMMS, another middle school, or at the high school level around post-secondary and careers. Currently, Leap is funding Dream More with a private grant and a state grant, but long-term sustainability will require access to Twenty-First Century Learning Community Funds. We have a grant-writing team that has been working on this, and we are waiting for the state to release the RFP. Finally, we want to expand our business relationships in the city to provide students with access to career information and the opportunity to build social capital. Linda, I'll hand it back to you.
Uh, next slide, Pat. So this is our grand finale. So the bottom line here is the opportunity in Lynn is boundless. The mayor and his staff, the superintendent and his staff, Deb Rugiero, Molly Cohen, I can, um, Brian Castellanos, who is now on our board, and all the wonderful, smart, and caring team of teachers that we've had the opportunity to work with, um both as we planned this and as we um started the programs. And we've gotten so much feedback, so much um about opportunities to continue to add programs and to innovate um in Lynn. And, you know, we're looking towards, you know, maybe other middle school programs, early college programs, College Success programs at the high school. Um as I said, the opportunities are boundless. Um I wanna end by just thanking you for letting us speak tonight and taking your time. I know you've all probably been on Zoom all day. Um if um if there is time, we'd be happy to take more questions. Um I hope I get to meet all of you in person. I know I've met Jared and Brian and Michael, um and hope I get to meet all of you. So thank you very much.
Dr. Tatwala. Uh, Dr. Tatwala.
Billy, you, you have to let the mayor call on you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um Mayor, Mayor, Mayor McGee, could you please call on me? I, I just wanted to.
Oh, go ahead. We, we weren't gonna have, um, if this is related to this, uh, I'm happy to call on.
I um, my, I was muted, and I wanna respond to the shout-out that Wanta Sim gave me. I, I, it was like, it, it made my night. Uh that was so long ago in my teaching career. But Wanta was one of the best students I've, I've ever had, and that's when I was an English teacher, so. Thank you very much, uh, Wanta. I really appreciate that shout-out. Thank you very much.
Um, more, more than welcome to give that comments, Bill. Thank you. Um, quest. Uh, any questions from the members of the committee? Member Sadaway, and then member Gailey, and then member Castellanos.
Uh Linda and, and, and the, uh, the rest of the, the staff from Leap that came to speak. Um I, I, I wanna thank you for the update and, and um uh ju-just the information that was provided, obviously with EL students, um especially ones that are new to, to our country or, or new to the city. Having to start the, the school on full, fully remote is, is more than challenging, I can imagine. Um so to at least give a few of them a head start with the summer program is greatly appreciated. Um I, I have questions about expanding the program to, uh, to reach more students. Uh what is, what is the plan on that? Um is that uh contingent on additional funding that um, that hopefully we're still applying for grants for?
Um, yeah, so the um, the current program is being funded through, as I mentioned, the Wellington um Management Foundation Grant, and we also got, which I know Mayor McGee, I don't know if he had his fingers in it this year, but certainly in past years, uh we got uh the After-School Out-of-School Time Grant. Um, you know, we're kinda on pins and needles, waiting to see what happens with the state budget and hope that doesn't um get, get decreased. But we've been told there will be money coming, so that's what's funding it now. To act, um, our original plan was then to get it started with those two grants, but then to apply for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center Grant. Um, the word from Desi on that is, is that they were afraid to float a new site, not afraid. They felt that floating a new site application in the middle of, of a pandemic would be difficult for school districts to deal with because they're, as Mayor, the mayor knows, and I'm sure, you know, and Pat does as well, that it's a very complex um grant. The grant application itself is complex, but actually implementing these programs are difficult. And they thought asking districts to implement a new site when they're in the midst of COVID was not the right thing to do. So they held up the RFP. They did not, they did not release it. Um they were thinking they might release it this fall for a January start, but it hasn't come out yet. So my guess is they're gonna wait till next year. So we'll just continue to fund it with private money, but it's gonna limit our ability to expand. We'd originally thought we'd be at sixty to eighty students. We're thirty. Um Hillary, remind me, how many students are you planning on increasing in January to, or one?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to actually get to sixty because then the after-school setting, it's a little bit easier to, to staff it a little bit more tightly. So we'll have two cohorts on Monday and Wednesday, and two on Tuesday and, and Thursday. So we think we can hit that number. The kids are just not getting quite the same level of service, obviously. But we'll at least get them introduced to the, to the program.
Oh, great. Um, you know, that's my, my, um, sorry, my son is going to bed, so he wanted a kiss. I'm sorry. So, um.
That's most important.
Very important. Family first.
So, um, uh, uh, you know, obviously, uh with COVID and, and what, uh, any additional um, uh, resources for our students is, is, is more than welcome. Obviously, I understand that it, it comes with a price. Um, uh, and you could see how, uh, how we're, we're, we're earlier with the uh, uh, subcommittee with the sports, you know, we, we're all trying to, to get these kids involved with something, so it's, it's extremely important. So whatever you need from us, um, uh, to, to, to help, to show that, you know, we, we want this, these uh Twenty-First Century uh grants to be, you know, pushed through because, because of the importance. You have the data to back it up. Uh, you know, that, that, if you could just play that one story for, for, for Desi or for the governor of uh, of uh, the, the student that is an engineer now, you know, that's, that's, that's crazy. That's, it's, it's refreshing. It's, it's wonderful to see. Um, so you, you have, you know, obviously my full support on what you're doing in the city. I'd love to see it expanded throughout the city. Um and, and I'm happy that at least some of the students have the head start, what was to expect it with the um, the online learning. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Member Gailey.
Um, welcome and thank you. I, I'm like thrilled to see that you're there. Um, I taught at um Lynn Public Schools for thirty-three and a half years in science. Um, my last year at Pickering, I had a student come in from the Dominican Republic that couldn't speak, and um it was a very difficult transition for her. And I think that she would have benefited greatly. She did succeed. She graduated high school. But this program is so needed in Lynn and welcome to Lynn. If you need anything, any support from me, just reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. I will do that.
Member Castellanos.
Um, just to echo my colleagues, um Leap for Education has been a phenomenal add-on um towards our fight towards equity, you know, and Linda and her team, they fight for equity, and it's been inspiring to watch their work. Um, this was a vital after-school program feature in Lynn Public Schools, especially for that, um, for the population that, you know, we're aiming to assist and, and, and provide that hope. Um, it's been wonderful to watch the growth, even uh during the pandemic and, and COVID-nineteen. Um, the COVID-nineteen uh impact has something, I, I noticed that Linda and her team were very resilient and just their ability to stay just so, so motivated. And it's just remarkable and a true testament of, uh, and I'm grateful for even being a part of witnessing the process. And it's been a great, um, a great thing for the city. Uh it's, it's amazing. We really, I, I've, I've never met someone like Linda who is so persistent, like she's relentless. We're very lucky for Linda in Lynn, and we, and like Attorney Michael Sadaway um mentioned, like that we need this program expanded, and we're willing to work with, you know, whoever we need to. And anybody who, who's on this line, um, get familiar, Leap for Education is in Lynn at Marshall Middle School. Um, and we're very grateful. So thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Brian.
Then, Michael Polo. And then, Member Nicholson.
Sorry for being so slow, Linda. I, I think it's, it's one, it sounds like a wonderful program. But um what I would like the members, we haven't even seen a budget for this school year. But I think that um, there's a lot of things that in a if we have anybody when we're doing a budget, I think we should consider, you know, doing the funding to add on students for this program, you know, maybe not for a permanent thing, but for if there's extra funding. It's something that we should think about funding. You know, uh, after that, you, you know, you may have to pursue um grants because lots of times our budget is extremely, extremely tight. But the way it is right now, um, things are a little different, and there may be money. And I think that, you know, we should all consider it if everybody likes it. The only other thing I say is we, we call our night program the Leap Program. So it makes it very confusing for a lot of people in the community. I want them to know, you know, it's two Leap Programs, and they're totally different, but, and they're both very good.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Member Nicholson.
Thank you. I echo my colleagues to, to thank the Leap team so much for their, all their tremendous work. It's really wonderful to see, and we really appreciate what you're doing. Um, the, the, the question I had, uh, two questions. One is, uh, are you learning, uh, are there takeaways from the work that you've been doing remotely, the tutoring you've been doing remotely, um, that you could maybe share uh more formally, um, at some point, um, as we think about how? Because thi- this is, I think it's unique to have an after-school program like this that's, that's, that's formally partnered with the university, um, that is all online and something that's new, so I think that would be interesting. And that, that, you don't need to answer that right away. It does not, if you don't have a particular thought. But then also, my other question was, uh, how are those stu-, can you, can you say again, how are those students that are participating are selected? Um, we, we do have a large, as you know, uh, EL population, and I think there's a lot of students that would, that would benefit from something like this. How, how are we um getting tho- these particular students connected with the program?
Hillary, do you wanna take that, or Wanta?
Um, so the students for the summer were uh initially identified by teachers and, and guidance counselors um and recruited from there. And then for the, for the, for the fall, we, we started with the students we served in the summer. We invited them to come back. And then we reached out to teachers in the clusters that serve primarily EL students. Um, and then the guidance counselor also worked with the teachers to get, to get referrals as well. So since the teachers were, you know, spending a lot of time coming up to speed on school agenda, the guidance counselor was able to get some additional referrals. Wanta popped into some advisories and introduced the program to students. Um, and we'll take a similar strategy for um expanding our enrollment for, for the fall. So it is, at this point, it's open, it's been open to everyone. We did um start one cohort and then waited till we had a group for the second cohort, and we'll do the same thing for the winter. So right now, we, we, we will have room, and I, as, as people get to know it more, it's hard, but we can't go in person to introduce it to anyone and explain it. So we get to do that a little bit virtually, but um right now, we are able to accommodate any, everyone who applied.
That's great to know. That's good, that, that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Linda, thanks. Doesn't look like there's other questions. Linda, thanks for the presentation. Uh, you know, I'm, it's been great working with you over the years, and it's great to have you in Lynn. And uh it's an opportunity to see the great work that's going on with Leap and uh uh the work that we really wanna see continue in Lynn with um potentially in the future, expanding it and obviously getting grants. And I think the idea of finding dollars and, and getting it um into the city and making this program grow is great. So thanks for the presentation and look forward to working together. Great to see you again.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Next, next on the agenda is um HVAC updates with uh Mike Donovan. I know he's on Zoom.
Uh, good evening. Uh, just wanna give you a brief update on where we stand with the ventilation, the HVAC in the ten uh school buildings that do not have uh mechanical ventilation. Uh, these buildings are A-bone, brickett, corbett, druids, Fallon, Lincoln Thompson, Tracy, Washington, Tecto Larry, and the Pickering Schools, the uh older portion of the Pickering School. Um, we've had an engineer go out, examine the existing ventil, gravity ventilation systems, look at the plans for the buildings, uh, look at the electrical systems, and he's derived two options uh that can be used in, in these buildings to uh bring fresh air into classrooms, office spaces, and, and common areas. Um, both of these options um can be used. We, looking at the option A, which calls for numerous individual units to be placed in each area, each classroom or, or office space, um, would result in, as he says, new four hundred and seventy-seven odd units sprinkled about buildings, operating independently in each room versus uh reactivating mechanically um the existing ventilation system, which has been closed for about fifty years, and bringing, having the central system with the reheat on it to bring uh heated fresh air into um classrooms and other spaces. Depending, each, each option may be applicable uh to different buildings so that um we could look at Building A and say, okay, we wanna go with Option One. Building Two, Option, uh, Two would be better. Um, so as we move further into the details and the engineering, there'd be a, a better idea of how each building would be set up um to bring fresh air into the um, in classrooms. The, the engineer is, is familiar with the Desi um reopening guidelines as well as the Atrium um mechanical ventilation guidelines and is prepared to uh, in these, does install these systems. There's been a, a rough price, and as the engineer said, this is a order of magnitude estimate, um plus or minus fifteen percent, about four-point-five million dollars to bring fresh air into these uh ten different buildings. The Tecto Larry Building is a totally separate uh building. It has a ventilation system that's been closed for many decades that can be reopened um by installing new equipment and uh controls uh to make it work. I am available to answer any questions anybody may have at this time.
So I know, thank you, Mike. I know everyone has um had a chance to get the report, other questions from the members related to the report, uh, uh, and um what the work would entail. Member Capola. Member Capola. And then, Member Sadaway.
Okay. My question is, is it better to have the, I'm assuming the first batch is like a portable situation and the situation and the other one is updating the existing? Is is that how I'm reading it or have I misunderstood it?
Uh, no, ma'am. The the first option is actually a a fixed uh installation. It's not a temporary. They would hang on the ceiling in each individual room, a unit like two by two by six foot in size. It would, they would take the top pane of a win- one window out, there'd be two, there'd be a vent, there'd be an intake and an uh an exhaust and it would take fresh air in, mix it with air from the classroom or the office space with the fresh air coming in and vent out some air and and bring in the other air. It would be there, it would be independently operated per se, it'd be either on or off in at that location. Um, it can be tied to a central control so they can all be on and all off at once, but it is a fixed installation, it is permanent and it would uh bring in the necessary air to that space. It just would be intrusive in that it'd be hanging from the ceiling. I shouldn't use the word intrusive, you'd see it there and it'd be in the room.
Okay, um, then the question is, you said it could be uh centrally turned on from one spot, but if, what was your idea of doing it? Was it that uh each room was going to be turned on and off by somebody in particular, whether it's the teacher, custodians, the principal?
No, we would uh, we would attempt, the desire would be to hook these to our building management systems so that they can be remotely turned on two or three hours before the uh day begins and shut off two or three hours after so that we're continuously bringing in fresh air from the outside. Um, individual controls, um, and when I'm saying that is that each unit would be serviced individually, there'd be a separate filter in each unit versus when you have a central unit, there'd be filters in the in the central unit. Um, i- if I gave you the impression that it's that some staff would be required to turn it on, I'm sorry, that's not the intent.
Okay, and um when you're talking about the filters, so each each unit would have to be changed or filters, what's, what is in the long run, you know, uh, which one would be more cost efficient in the long run? I mean, we're not really good at taking care of stuff. I mean, it's obvious from this HVAC system problem we have, but um if we had to change every single one, you know, filter in every single room, are they replaceable? Are they just um, you know, like the uh air purifiers we just got, they can just be cleaned? Or does it make more sense to go the other way and you just have one location that you have to change?
Uh, at this time and and the all the the balance of the buildings, all the buildings that have mechanical ventilations, in each classroom, there's a a unit and um the full wall unit that brings fresh air into the classroom. We change those filters three times a year. So, w- we have a a preventive maintenance program set up, three times a year we come and we change the filters. These filters for these 177 units would just be added to that program. I I don't foresee a difficulty there. It, in regards to the central system, it's a little bit easier in that, yes, there's not only less filters, but there's less motors, there's 177 motors in 177 units. So, my preference and the preference of uh my people is to have s- the central units because it's one unit, it's maintainable, easier a- and and it will work, but either units will work, um, and it's going to depend on the buildings themselves. For example, the Tracy uh building, i- it's not in particularly good shape with the masonry. Some of the chimneys in the old ventilation system, the bricks in the interior have collapsed so that it may not be uh cost effective or feasible to utilize those, so we would be forced into option one at that building. That instance may not occur in another location.
Thank you.
So, so just so I'm clear on this, I know there's some other questions, Mike. The recommendation is for this, um, the second option, uh, to do one unit in building depending on, and I you mentioned Tracy, might have to be a separate, depending on how the engineering as the work gets uh gets to being uh implemented. But your recommendation and the engineer's recommendation is the individual units in the whole building is the the better approach, uh, option two, is that, is that?
Yes, sir. Option two is is the better approach, assuming that we can make it work in these old buildings. Um, there's there's less things to go wrong.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Member Satoa and then Member Gabe.
I think you, um, Mike, did you say that the the total cost is $4.5 million for the 377?
Uh, plus or minus, it's an order of magnitude estimate, so yes, 4.5 million plus, plus or minus 15% excluding um other incidental costs such as
Electrical?
Uh, no, the electrical would be in there, the asbestos abatement, if once we get into some of these areas, we we discover asbestos. Most of these areas have already been abated. We've done a a survey of the um the plenum rooms and the uh the chimneys without crawling up into the chimneys and most of these plenum rooms are cleaned out back in the 90s, so they've been cleaned for years, but there are a few instances where um some of these uh plenum rooms haven't been opened in in five decades, it's been sealed shut where we would have to clean them and that would be uh the incidental type cost there.
And and what do you think about the, so the the these buildings are old, um, wh- what do you, what do you think about the electrical aspect of it though? You don't think we're going to have an issue?
Um, I don't think it's going to be a major issue, um, in that we may have to upgrade some systems that not, they've looked, the engineers have looked at them and we haven't had a big discussion about electrical. In other words, they haven't brought it to my attention and said, we went into this building and we saw a problem. They've made this proposal and and based upon this, they believe it can be done with what we have. Keep in mind, in a lot of the schools where these electrical problems exist, it's not that we don't have sufficient electricity, it's we don't have sufficient wiring to each room. There may be two outlets in each room. That doesn't mean down in the basement at the service gear, w- we don't have sufficient power into the building, it's just we we'll have to run sub panels to where the equipment is from the the main switchgear in order to make things work.
Okay. You know, that that's, that's what I'm just thinking of when we're talking about so many um different moving parts, um, you know, uh, the the electrical is is definitely a a big thing and um, you know, obviously, we're we're taking steps to to move forward to 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 correct the HVAC situation. Um, do you know of any other um uh like districts are 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 moving forward with a project like this as well?
I'm not personally familiar with that. I know a lot of districts have gone with um the purification units and open windows and fans in windows.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Gabe.
Hi, Mike, nice seeing you. Um, my question is, um, all this stuff, like I, I read through all of those plans that were sent out earlier to us with the plenums and the sealed um furnace units, so my question is, how is that going to be cleaned up? It says here that it's not included in the price to clean up those areas?
Yes, that's what I was discussing in regards to the asbestos abatement. We, we went into all these these 10 buildings and and we looked into the plenums and as I stated previously, a lot of the plenum rooms were cleaned up when the school department did a major asbestos abatement back in the late 80s, early 90s, the money was, funds were made available uh to cities and towns to clean up asbestos at that time and um that doesn't mean though, in some of the plenum rooms which have been sealed, they'll need to be abated. I- it's not the, it's not the end of the world, it's it's an expense and a step that needs to be undertaken, but now that we've found it, we're going to clean it up anyways because these rooms have been opened and have been closed for decades, w- we now have to clean it anyway, so it's going to be done.
All right, so I I'm trying to get it clear, so you're, you you would recommend putting in the central system, number two, option two?
If possible, yes, um, because with the central system, we can install uh an HVAC unit, heating ventilation unit, essentially, we'll we'll put a a gas boiler, gas fed boiler in there with the hot water coil to the unit so that as the the air's brought in, it's not just mixing with air in the building, but we're heating the air and that means we won't have to run the boilers as much, the steam boilers as much as we do now, we'll be able to provide heat to the ventilation system in the months of September, October, November, you know, April, May, late March, um, reducing our use of the main boilers and reducing our energy use in the schools. So we'll be upgrading the energy efficiency, energy efficiency of the schools by doing this as well as bringing in fresh air with the central units.
So that are the um, that are fixed, any air quality problems that we have in these 10 buildings?
Well, that that's, I'm a little bit confused because I'm unaware of any air quality problems. We have ventilation, we have ventilation problems, yes.
Well, that's what I would like you to sort of expand on because once this happened, you know, like this um situation where we needed to get a better ventilation system in those 10 schools occurred, now we're worried, like teachers are really worried about the ventilation in the other buildings and could you address that? Cause I I just want to clarify that.
Sure, I mean.
Because like, they're nervous that 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 this problem could be happening at other schools, that their ventilation is not doing well in the other 26 schools. No, we don't have that many, the other 16 schools. Are you following me on this?
Yes, ma'am, I am and um I I would want to allay anybody's fears regarding uh ventilation. In the past, since 2012, we replaced a lot of mechanical equipment. The city has gone out uh through the train company, done energy efficiency improvements and replaced a lot of the mechanical units in the schools. These units, what the rooftop, they're in the classroom, are bringing in fresh air, reheating it, um, or cooling if they're, if they have air conditioning and circulating it within the building and it's all done in accordance with the standards uh that are set out by AFRAM and CDC. We can modulate, in other words, bring more fresh air in um to meet the the recent CDC standards. Those buildings um at, function adequately, uh, they bring in fresh air, th- there's no concerns, we change the filters three times a year, we use the filters recommended by the CDC. Um, these older buildings though, only had ventilation through windows because during the 1970s, the systems were closed. So if if people weren't prone to open their window in the wintertime because it's too cold, they wouldn't be getting fresh air and the air would get stale. Carbon dioxide being the the largest problem, everybody's breathing and there's no fresh air coming in. Um, if you look at the DESI recommendations and the CDC recommendations, nowhere in these recommendations do they call for air quality tests. What they call for is maximizing the the bringing in of outside air and the exchange of air. So, the HVAC system, HVAC systems that we're working here in these schools will not have air conditioning, but the ventilation, we're going to bring in outside air, the same air you'd be breathing if you're standing outside now, we'll filter it through a filter to remove partic- particulate matter, pollen, dust, whatever, um, and circulate it for the rooms. So, when people use air quality, I understand they're talking about the concerns for the 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 air itself, but this is just to bring fresh air into buildings as is required by building codes everywhere.
Thank you very much.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you, Mr. Donovan, for the presentation, um, and for, to you and your team for for looking at this. Uh, I I'd like to to uh ask for some elaboration on that last point because I think there there are a lot of questions about this. You know, my understanding is that these updates would be to uh get fresh air into the inside of the building, so they could get the fresh air, and isn't the point of that so that the air is better and therefore improves the air quality? I'm not understanding why this is, this would be totally separate and removed from air quality tests. So could you talk a little bit about what air quality tests are are measuring? Um, and then, you know, as a separate plan, I believe that we're contractually obligated to to perform these these kinds of tests, so is that um something that is uh we could get an update on as well?
Sure. The the very first thing I would ask anybody who wants me to perform an air quality test is, what's the problem? What am I testing for? There are literally millions of things that you can test for. Sometimes we'll go in and there'll be a a claim of uh it's musty or moldy and we'll test for mold. Um, at Classical, because it was built on a an urban landfill, we routinely test for methane, hydrogen sulfide, um, VOCs. Um, other times, people may claim to be allergic to something and we'll do an air quality test, which their doctor will say, you're you're allergic to A, B and C and we'll test for that. But just to run an air quality test, um, really, unless you you're looking for something in particular, you're you're hitting on an awful lot of uh things, chemicals, chemical compounds that that you would be testing for, that in reality aren't there because if we're circulating air inside and there's nothing in our environment to be causing this, y- you won't find them. And and I just want, and and an air quality test is a snapshot at that time in place when you do it. Further, whenever you take an air quality test on an inside of a building, you take, you test the air outside of the building so you can compare the two. Because as in the case for Classical, we will test for hydrogen sulfide and we'll we'll get a number for hydrogen sulfide, but we also test the air outside to compare it against that number to determine whether or not there's a difference, a significant difference or something that would be a cause for concern. Same thing with mold. You can find mold in the air outside as well as inside. Um, and so it it's comparative, obviously, if you're testing, you find something like VOCs, you go back and you do it again. Usually when we find VOCs, it's because we've just waxed the floors in the past week or something and it's it's still in the air and hasn't been eliminated. Um, but it's not routine in any district I know of to go in and do air quality tests unless there's a specific issue um on a specific location because it the range of what we test for is just too great.
Okay, thank you. So you're saying the, you you test the inside and the outside, presumably that that you're trying to isolate an issue this on the outside and so you're assuming that the outside is generally going to be better. If you're circulating the air, then the air is, once you have the HVAC systems, the air on the inside should be better if it's bringing in air from the outside, so wouldn't then the sorry, that's, wouldn't wouldn't, wouldn't then the, you would expect to have better results on air quality tests after you make the HVAC changes if the if it's bringing in fresh air?
Oh, uh, there's no question, bringing in fresh air to these buildings is a very desirable outcome and the air quality, you you won't get the biggest air quality issue of all, which is when the schools are fully occupied. And keep in mind, these systems are designed for a fully occupied building, you know, 600 kids in the school, uh, all breathing at the same time, um, exhaling carbon dioxide, which is really what causes in wintertime in these buildings or any building that doesn't have adequate ventilation is the stuff you feel and you maybe have a little headache, you get tired, it's because the carbon dioxide levels have risen too high in that room. Um, by bringing fresh air, you eliminate that. Uh, but we wouldn't necessarily go into a random building at a random time to test for the presence of any other chemical in the air if there wasn't some indication that it would be necessary. One, because of the likelihood, or very low likelihood, you're going to find something and two, these tests are very expensive when you when you scan a broad range of chemicals that you want to test for. We have sensors on some of our equipment in the other schools, our mechanical equipment for carbon dioxide. They'll increase the ventilation as the carbon dioxide levels in in classroom rise. So, that is accounted for in most of our mechanical equipment in the newer buildings.
Okay, but so we are testing air quality now. Okay, but so we are testing air quality now, right?
No, we're bringing fresh air into buildings, um, in accordance with, uh, the DESI, um, guidelines and accordance with the codes. Um, there's never been in any community I know a a testing program where you go out and just test, continuously test the air. The only building that we test and we do it because we built on a landfill is classical, and we're looking for specific gases.
Right, no, I understood. I I my, I I I was under the impression that at our last meeting, we were told that we were obtaining quotes to be to to get air quality tests. Is that not the case?
No, I think that what happened is, uh, back in July and August, people started talking about air quality. Um, and the word air, the term air quality was put out there. And what we're really talking about is ventilation because if you look at the DESI guidelines that we're using, that were issued back in Ju- July, rather, that we were looking at for the schools, it's about maximizing ventilation and fresh air and exhausting the air in the rooms so that there's no chance of, uh, a buildup of anything in the air. Obviously, what they're talking about is the coronavirus being spread somehow in the room. So by exhausting the air and bringing fresh air, you eliminate that. But there's no guidelines coming from DESI, no guidelines coming from the C D C that says you should go test the air and look for A, B, and C because all these guidelines are set up around, um, the maximizing ventilation to minimize any potential spread of the coronavirus versus saying, hey, go test for hydrogen sulfide in this particular classroom and because you you would, you just wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Um, I said, Dr. Tuttwiler, you want to weigh in?
Yeah.
I don't remember Gailey as a question as well.
Just quickly.
Go ahead, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Yeah, um, uh, and I've I've been sort of, uh, not sort of, I've been uh, consistent in saying that, um, it's actually in one of my slides that I've used in a presentation for school committee, actually used a similar slide, uh, for our negotiations with uh, each of the units that we negotiated with. Um, the 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 primary mitigation strategy, um, is, has always been hand hygiene, mask wearing, physical distancing, um, cleaning and disinfecting and contact tracing. Um, a secondary strategy is, uh, is ventilation. Uh, what Mike Donovan is saying, I I don't disagree with. However, we committed to, uh, uh, both the teachers' union and the administrators' union, uh, that we, administrators' association, that we would conduct those tests. And we were under the impression that that's what was going to be done. Um, perfectly happy with the the path that we're taking now to create a sustainable uh, outcome in terms of, uh, fresh air exchange in those buildings. But we're still going to fulfill our our commitment to providing those tests, so we're having them done.
We are, we are doing this.
If I may be so bold as to ask, and more than, we're more than willing to do tests, but what exactly do you wish us to test for?
And the tool that we're doing, uh, and I can, I can, uh, bring Kevin McHugh in. He's, uh, spoken directly with, um, the 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 folks who provide these services. DESI has given a list of about fifteen, uh, firms that provide these services to schools on a state bid, um, uh, on the bids, the bid list. Uh, one would be, uh, for fresh air exchange, um, the extent to which air is moving. Uh, I think what Mike was was saying earlier, I'll just reiterate, uh, it's the movement of air uh, that evaporates the microdroplets, uh, that might be hanging in the air, which might potentially contain, um, COVID. Uh, and that's what, uh, one thing that, you know, by opening the window or a mechanical ventilation would create that, uh, we'll be testing for that. And then a simple air quality, uh, indoor air quality assessment. I'll bring Kevin in to say a little bit more about that.
Uh, yes, uh, well, Mike, just so we, yeah, we do understand it. I think there's six standard items, it's VOCs, there's, uh, you know, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide. I mean, all that, there's like six standard things that we're going to have tested. Uh, I do understand your point, I I clearly articulate it, but we promised we'd do this, and I think as the superintendent, so we're really kind of having a two, uh, two reports done. One is just the standard, we're going to be going through all the buildings, um, we're in a process. We just finalized quotes today and we're starting to move forward with that. The second one would be the, as the superintendent said, an air movement, the, uh, flow of air through uh, all the rooms, just to show, uh, how much, uh, changes of air is coming through as well. So it's basically an airflow report would be the better way. That one's going to take a lot more time to get forward because to go through all the rooms, as you would know, is going to take time to measure that in every single classroom. And that probably will be, as stated, a little on the expensive side. But these are things we actually promised, uh, way back, uh, to, as we were working with the unions, that we would get done. So we're just fulfilling our promise on that end.
We have a firm on on contract that we could, if the desire is, I mean, we could have done that, but okay, I understand.
Mike, if you could, it would be great if you could send me the name of that firm too because, I mean, it, a lot of them are pretty busy right now, and especially the second part, we're struggling, uh, trying to get some good quotes. We want to make sure we get the best price for the city anyways.
Understood.
Um, member Gailey then, member Nicholson.
Mike, I just want to ask a question. Um, how come all of a sudden this became an issue? Like, I'm reading about plenums, I'm reading about ventilation not working, I'm reading about these ten schools. Um, I was like, I really thought, like, I worked at Pickering, and I really thought that when we had a problem, and sometimes in the sub-basement, like in two thousand and twelve or thirteen, you know, there was like a problem with mold smell, and, um, we would contact you, and you would come in and you would do a test, and you would figure, figure it out, clean it up. And, um, you found out that water was draining in behind a wall, and you fixed it so that there was you did something to fix it so the water didn't go into the building but went outside instead. It was moved away from the building. Do you recall doing something like that in some rooms?
No, yes, ma'am, we we, they're complaint-driven, air quality test, mold, um, would come out. Yes, we do exact, we did exactly what you said in, uh, in those sub-basement classrooms. A year or two ago, we actually put in, um, one of the similar type of the one seventy-seven units in in that room to, uh, those rooms to to bring in fresh air from the outside to to better ventilate it.
Okay, so now, um, I find out about, you know, this, and I I got nervous about how was the air quality in all the schools. Um, you have explained it to me quite clearly. But I went to Pickering on Monday, Mike, and I I went to every single room to make sure they had those, um, little ventilation, uh, fifteen hundred, three, I didn't even know they had a five hundred. And there seems to be some confusing, confusion on how they are used. And and some people are saying they're getting headaches. Um, I don't know if the right size is in the right room or what's going on. Um, I I just, I just want this result because I was so taken aback that this actually occurred in those ten schools.
Well, ma'am, to
Like, how do we not know that? How did we not know that this existed?
E- everybody knew this existed. This was a conscious decision made by the school committee and the school department back in the seventies. Close it down. When I was in school, this happened when I was in elementary school, and when I went to middle, you know, the the ventilation was shut off because the price of oil was so high. And as time went by, it it just, it apparently didn't rise to the top of the heap because of boiler needs, window needs, door needs. And frankly, right now, it's only risen to the top because of the coronavirus, the pandemic, and the need to circulate air according to guidelines to to do exactly what Dr. Tuttwiler described. And now it has the, it's, the attention's been given to the ventilation to to rise it to to the top. Um, it doesn't mean that the air quality was bad because anybody could have opened the window. And if you, if you, last winter, if you drove by a number of schools, you would have seen windows. Some propped open by books, but windows are open on the coldest days to bring fresh air into the rooms because the steam heat just becomes so overwhelmingly stifling.
Okay. All right, well, that, that answered my question, Mike. Thank you.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you. Uh, I clear, I appreciate that clarification from Dr. Tuttwiler and Mr. McHugh, and, uh, appreciate that offer, Mr. Donovan, to to work with the team so so those tests can be done as as soon as possible. I think, you know, it's important that we're all on the same page and working together, uh, and I think we all share the goal of getting everybody back to school safely as soon as possible. And, you know, I do think that that part of that is the, uh, the the trust and confidence of the people that we're asking to come back when we have established the protocols that we, uh, feel confidence in. And 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 I, you know, I I think that's that that's just going to be part of the process, so so thank you for that.
Members Tuttwiler.
Mike, wh- what is the turnaround for a project like this if we're talking about, um, uh, the second week of January to start having students come in?
Oh, this type of project will take months to, months to do, there's no question.
And, um, do we have a time commitment from the, a person that provided the, um, bid?
They're ready to start work, place the order in the equipment, and get their preliminary, uh, designs finalized, uh, as soon as we commit to them. Yes, they they have done a lot of work in the city of Lynn, um, and they are committed to to getting this work done.
And it's not, it's not, uh, dependent on us approving our school budget? This is going to become from other sources of of funding, I'm assuming?
Uh, um, um, member Tuttwiler, next on the agenda is the discussion related to the funding that we think might be a, uh, way to get the, um, the funding to address the the underlying discussion we're having right now. So if you want to keep that, um, question on to the next agenda item, which we'll get into. I know that Mike Bertino is also available, so we'll be speaking to that.
Okay.
I think, I think just right now, we wanted to at least get into the specifics on what what the, um, report, the engineering report reflected. I think we're talking about, obviously, for decades of of challenges that schools have faced, and and we're here in a a unique place and time to potentially address these, um, issues that have been around for a long time.
Uh, and just a a a a secondary question, uh, Mike, since you have had experience with, uh, certain types of air quality testing, um, what do you think the the turnaround, um, could be for for that aspect of it? If if it's not going to be coming from you and it's going to be coming from Kevin and 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 Dr. Tuttwiler, wh- what 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 types of expectations should we have, um, uh, for for getting a a report back like that with regards to the airflow and the passing of those six specific things that, um, Kevin mentioned?
Uh, as Kevin said, the airflow will take a lot longer to determine going through the buildings when they're in full operation and and testing that. That could take weeks to go through all these different buildings. The other tests, VOCs, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, I'm not sure what other chemicals, they'll go out, they'll test the building, and you should have the results in a week. Um, that that's, it's a routine type of test. Uh, and it'll give you a snapshot on that day what the air quality was.
Okay, good. I- i- it's good to have some sort of, um, mind frame when we're talking about these things. And it's important to to let, uh, the community know that they're two separate things. Um, obviously, I I believe that once we get these HVACs, uh, systems installed in these other places, it's going to help the air quality. That's the point, correct?
Correct, without question. Fresh air, fresh air is the best air. I I couldn't, can't say anything more. But the fresh air is what we breathe when we're not in the buildings. It's our outside air.
And, um, ju- just based off of that response, is it smart to to wait until after or get the test now?
Uh, if you're contractually obliged to do the test, I would, I would perform the test now. Um, uh, they may recommend you open your normal operating conditions if that's a window being opened, and you open the window. Um, there are exhaust, bathroom exhaust in these buildings, in the gang bathrooms, which are run twenty-four seven, which bring, do bring, you know, exhaust air from the schools. It's not, obviously, meeting the guidelines that the other ventilation systems that we're talking about intend to to meet. But I I don't think, from my personal experience, that you're going to find that you have a problem with those six chemicals in these schools or the six measures that you're going for. Um, that won't be an issue.
Thank you.
And it def- definitely won't be an issue in a vacant building.
Any other questions? From any of the members? Okay, Mike, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Um, and next on the agenda, uh, really, uh, we're jumping right into, uh, um, how are we going to pay for this? And and, you know, I got a, you know, a couple of points I'd like to make. Um, you know, this is, as as this discussion goes on, obviously, recognizing, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. Uh, in the nineteen seventies, these these ventilation systems were blocked up. Um, and some of us on the committee remember that, uh, others don't. But the the price of oil skyrocketed, and local communities are really being impacted. So the decision was made at the time to close up these ventilation systems and preserve or reduce the cost of what what was going on in terms of the oil embargo with the with the Mideast as well as uh, the crisis that it, we all felt. So whether that decision was appropriate or not, that's something we can't speak to when it was something that we've been dealing with in these older schools over the years as we try to build new schools. Uh, but in 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 some ways, uh, this could be an opportunity, um, for, uh, you know, to take savings that we have, and I'm going to have Mike Bertino and Kevin McHugh, as well as Dr. Tuttwiler, speak to a little bit. But it is an opportunity to to address what has been an ongoing issue in these ten buildings since they were closed up in the nineteen seventies, to address these, uh, circulation issues and really change the dynamic in the schools. Uh, and COVID nineteen may have provided us with this opportunity, considering what's going on right now. And that gets us to how are we going to pay for this? Um, and what we're asking the school committee to do, um, is, uh, to allow us to, uh, put a waiver in to utilize, uh, some of our school dollars to actually address, directly address these issues, obviously, the issues that are going to impact our ability to get people back in these buildings, particularly when these studies have reflected that we're, there's a code violations directly related to circulation. Um, and I, and I want to be clear on this, and I and I think it's going to be important for Kevin and Mike Bertino to speak to it. But these, we're talking about using savings, we're not talking about taking dollars away from, uh, the operation of the school. I'm not taking dollars away from the school. The money we're talking about here is about one point five percent of our total budget, four and a half million dollars. Um, like I said, it's the window of opportunity that we probably wouldn't have been able to do, um, in another circumstance, in terms of finding the dollars, particularly with the savings that we're seeing, um, because we're not in the buildings right now. So that's heating, transportation, and other savings we're seeing related to, uh, obviously, a fully remote operation. So, um, again, we're we're asking the the members of the school committee, uh, allow us to put that waiver in with the, um, with DESI. Uh, there's already been discussions with DESI related to this. Uh, but I think it's, uh, it's it's a a key piece of how we, uh, work towards getting these building, these buildings open and potentially back in these school buildings. And and that would require us to do what I think Mike has talked about and what the engineering reports have suggested. So I don't know if Dr. Tuttwiler, you want to speak to it, or we can jump in with Kevin. I don't know if Mike Bertino was on the call. I know he was planning on being on the call. But Dr. Tuttwiler, would you want to, um, speak, uh, to this?
Yeah, I I I would just quickly, um, just reiterate or echo, uh, the point about the timing, uh, and impact. Uh, I mean, we're in a unique, uh, situation, uh, where there is realized savings, um, that we can bring to bear on fixing an issue that, you know, as Mike Donovan said, is is has been the case for for decades. Um, and then in terms of impact, um, it is savings, the mayor just shared the percent of the total budget, uh, these funds would would represent. Uh, in our view, um, we we don't see this as being detrimental. Uh, in our view, um, w- we don't see this as being detrimental, um, uh, or impactful in a negative way, uh, as it relates, relates to our day-to-day operations or what we foresee as being needs, um, this school year.
I don't know if you, I know there's questions from the committee. Do we wanna, do we wanna allow, uh, Kevin McHugh and Mike Bertino to speak? Or do you wanna ask questions from, why don't we go to that? And then there'll be more than enough time to have questions. We're just kinda laying out, I think, the case for why a waiver makes sense. Uh, I think the first discussion with Mike Donovan was related to what it would take to, um, to address these problems in the 10 schools. So, I, I don't know, is Mike Bertino on the call?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? I am here.
Yeah, okay, good. So I don't know if either you or Kevin wanna start, and, uh, I'll leave that, um, to either one of you. Kevin, you wanna start or, and then we can go to Mike, or would you rather Mike, uh, jump in?
All right, I, I'll go. So the savings from the school budget, as we all know, uh, uh, last year, for example, uh, at the end of the year, we were saving money from not transporting our students. Uh, so there was a savings there. And currently, since we're not transporting our students, since we're remote, uh, there is a small transportation, I think, for some of the, for some of the students that are out at our special ed placements. But other than that, our majority of our students aren't being bused. So we are, uh, each month, we're saving, uh, monies with our, uh, bus contracts. So that's really good news. And those would be the savings, as the mayor identified, that we would be utilizing to, uh, fund that this, uh, you know, towards this project from the school side. And, uh, I think it's pretty simple that we, we should be in good shape with, uh, you know, with the funds. Uh, last year, our total savings was 2.8 million dollars, and that was from March 1st through June. So just to put things in perspective, uh, you know, we're almost, we're already at that point right now. I would imagine by Christmas time, we're not, yeah, I don't see that, you know, at least having that amount of money. And if we were to do something in January, I think that's a safe number to utilize towards this type of project if we still had money available to meet transportation needs of the spring. And, and depending on where we go with that long term. So that's kind of our piece. I know, I, I'll let Mike speak to the city side on, uh, you know, there are some funds available, uh, from the, uh, city side budget, uh, as it relates to, I believe, maintenance and custodials and that nature. You wanna go ahead, Mike?
Sure.
And, and if either Mike, Mike, if you wanna explain this so that the members understand. Uh, the transportation costs are not net school spending dollars. They are not, uh, dollars that are identified as net school spending. Those are city costs to pay for transportation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Mike, you wanna jump in?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, hello, everybody. Um, so the money on the school, on the city side of the budget is our, as everyone is aware, our inspectional service department runs the 27 school buildings. And since July 1st, because of things that have occurred, we've been able to, um, save money in many areas, including cleaning expenses, which we did in-house many times over the summer where previously it was done by outside contractors. We got better-than-average, um, savings rates from our electric and our heat bills. And as well as the overall supplies, because we know at least for the next, or at least for the first three and a half months, there's been, uh, relatively nobody, um, in the schools using these supplies, using this electricity. And, um, a lot of our expenses too, for emergency cleanings and things of that nature, were covered, um, through grant monies. So, we feel that over time, we'll be able to accumulate, um, some, you know, hopefully, one to two million dollars in savings. And the reason to request the waiver is, is to cut a little bit of the red tape out of this project. So, we won't have to, um, bid these schools individually, we could do it as a package deal. And that way, if we had to go out and seek, you know, a further small appropriation, if we came short on savings, we know we would have a good, um, rationale and a good reason to tell everybody that we're able to pay for approximately four million of this project through savings. And the final bid came in at 4.7 million, so we'll need about 700,000 from another source. And most likely, we would request that from the council through free cash. It's just, we'll have to all be patient and watch as the savings accumulates each month. Obviously, if the children go back to school, you know, sooner than later, we'll have less savings. But I think that the waiver will just allow us the ability to, uh, streamline this project and get it done quicker than we would under normal circumstances.
I know there was some questions from the members, uh, Member Nicholson and then Member Capola.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and Mr. McHugh, Mr. Bertino, Dr. Tuttwiler for the presentation. Uh, I, I mean, I think that, uh, that all makes sense. I think, uh, would, I think, it, it normally, I'd be careful about asking for a waiver, particularly because a- as every, as we all know, we've had issues with net school spending, um, in years past, uh, and now a few years ago at this point, but still. And then the, the purpose of the net school spending is to make sure that the, the dollars are being, uh, spent on, on students directly. Uh, but these are, the, the, I think we all expect these operational savings to be a one-time savings, right? As soon as we're back, w- we will be incurring these costs again. It wouldn't make any sense to, to take on recurring operational expenses, uh, to fill that, uh, amount because then we wouldn't be able to pay for it next year. Uh, so I think it, it makes sense to use a one-time operational saving to make an investment in a capital expenditure. Uh, particularly when we know that this capital expenditure is gonna, is gonna, um, i- i- go towards the discussion we just had earlier about the, the importance of, of the, the air circulation. Um, so I, I just wanted to, and, and the other, the other thing is obviously that's important is, uh, to me, that Dr. Tuttwiler, uh, because wherever you have savings, right, I think it's on the school committee for us to think about what's the, what's the best use of these funds. And I think my understanding is that Dr. Tuttwiler, uh, sees this as the most appropriate use of these funds educationally. Uh, so I just wanted to, to say I support it.
Thank you, uh, Member Capola.
I definitely like, uh, true. Um, question is, if we're asking for the waiver, is the waiver mean that, um, what we spend will be allowed towards our net school spending?
Mike, uh, Bertino?
Uh, ye- yes, that's correct. However, you know, i- i- it may in turn, we may not need it. Again, we're just doing this so that we can start this project. Because as Kevin, Mr. McHugh said, you know, the transportation savings lowers our threshold for net school. It's just that we're gonna translate some of our savings on the city side that would normally be, um, operating maintenance into capital maintenance. So, we, we may be okay, but we don't wanna take that chance. We wanna, um, sign that, hopefully, get the waiver so we can expedite this. You know, there's a lot of other hurdles we have to overcome, but we think that, you know, at least cutting the red tape on one side of the equation will be well worth it in the long run. So we're just looking for that as a backstop. Because we could be okay, and it may not matter, but I don't wanna, you know, stop and start this project four or five times. I just wanna jump into it, hopefully get it complete, you know, in, in several months and then, and then move on to the next, um, project.
Mayor McGee, when you get an opening?
Yeah, uh, Member Ford and then Member Tuttwiler.
Mike, you wanna go first?
Go ahead, Mike. Okay, um, so, i- i- this is directly tied to the, the services that we, we, we wanna be offering our students, um, in, in our schools. So, you know, I, 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 I'm, I'm in total support of it. I, I think that, um, you know, we just spent almost 20 minutes talking to, um, uh, Mike Donovan about, uh, just air quality and, and the HVAC systems and how important it is for, for us to make sure that our schools are safe. Um, i- i- it absolutely makes sense to, to do what, what, what the request is and to move forward. So we can, uh, immediately move forward on, on, on correcting these issues. I think that, um, i- 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 it makes sense. Um, so, so you have my support.
Thank you, uh, Member Ford and then Member Gately.
Yeah, I, I just got a quick one that, uh, may, may not, may or may not be applicable. But we had money set aside for the, the Marshall demolition. Um, if that is not all spent, could some of it be used to this, for this?
So I don't know who wants to answer that. My understanding, uh, Mike, you wanna speak to that?
Sure.
Mike Bertino?
Yes, um, we do have money set aside, but it's, um, because of everything that's going on at that site, it's gonna be significantly, um, under the amount required to complete that entire project. So although we had several million dollars set aside, that project, to get it done, is closer to five million. So there will, we won't recognize any savings from the Marshall School.
Okay, thank you.
Member Gately?
Just wanna say that, um, as Dr. Tuttwiler says often, safety first. And if this is going to help the ventilation in those buildings so that all the students are safe, and we need to just make a motion and get this done.
Any other questions? Yeah, I think this is an investment that goes back to our students and our teachers, and our faculty. It's an investment we need to make. Um, so is a mo- Member Tuttwiler?
The motion to, uh, use the maintenance funds for capital upgrades HVAC.
Second.
And that includes a, a letter, a waiver letter to DESI as well, I would include that in the motion.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion with that language included. Uh, John Mayo, do you have any, do you have any points to that? If not, if not, we can move forward on that motion.
Do we need to specify?
Motion, is there a second?
Uh, we seconded.
Um, there, there's a second, but I think that, um, Jared, Attorney, um, Nicholson said, do we, do, do you wanna be specific on the amount?
Um, I'll, I'll ask Mike Bertino on that, I don't think that's, or Kevin, do you wanna speak to that?
Uh, I, I think, I think in our discussion, uh, Mr. Mayor, when we were on with the department, that wasn't as relevant as more of a vote to utilize, uh, funds, uh, uh, to get the waiver for the net school spending, you know, use of those funds. It was more generic about that than the dollar amount. Because at that time, I believe we didn't have an exact figure. And I still think the number that, uh, Mr. Donovan presented in the prior presentation is still not a hardcore number. You know what I mean, it's, 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 they got a percentage of a plus or minus 15%. So, they didn't mention that as far as the, uh, our discussion. I think it was more just the use of funds to do that. Maybe it, I think maybe Jared, there might be a cap, might be a better way of not to exceed, you know? And I think if we put something like that, that would at least cover us that way. You know, if you wanna push it up a little bit over the, to the higher percentage.
For six million?
I, I, I couldn't answer that question, but-
Why don't we just put it to-
I, 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 I'd like, can Mike Bertino, would you speak to that in terms of what the number is? I think, uh, not identifying a number, and, and I, I think you explained it. This is to allow us to utilize some of the funds, but there was saving in other dollars. Um, so I don't know what your thoughts are, Mike Bertino, related to that.
Um, my general thought is the, uh, 20% on the original, um, estimate of approximately 4.5. So, I would think that, you know, uh, not to exceed 5.5. And then I, again, if we do exceed that, I think it makes a strong argument to request additional funds from another source.
And it, it, this wouldn't be, um, a first that we've, we've added a, a, a number when we were thinking about selling Marshall. Remember, we, we had a, a, a bottom line and, and then they had to come back. So, there's precedent that, that we, we, we set a figure and we, we go from there. So, I, I'll amend my motion, Mr. Mayor, uh, to use, um, maintenance fund not to exceed 5.5 million for capital upgrades on the HVAC system, um, and to request the waiver, uh, from DESI.
Motion's on the table and been made, is there a second?
Second.
Requires a roll call?
Mr. Cas- Casianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
I wanna thank, uh, both, uh, Kevin McHugh and Mike Bertino for joining us and helping us on that discussion as well as Mike Donovan, uh, on the discussion that led into this. Um, next on the agenda, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, would you like to speak to that? On new business request for a donation?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly looking for the committee's, uh, approval to accept a donation from Target of various school supplies to Ingles Elementary School.
Ian, uh, just a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, Member Tuttwiler.
You know if, if, if these are gonna be school supplies that will be dispersed for this school year? Or is it something they're gonna hold on to?
We, we, if I may, um-
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Tuttwiler, please.
We, we've been lucky, and Ingles in particular has been really lucky as our largest elementary school in terms of re- receiving donated, uh, supplies. And there've been a number of, um, uh, supplies pickups we've offered for families. Uh, just what we did at the beginning of the year was not really enough to sustain for the entire year. So as things come in, whether it's things that we've ordered or things that have, uh, been donated, because you might imagine things we've ordered, uh, the, the, the backorder scenario, the, the supply chain interruptions have really caused some delays. But as they come in, uh, we offer pickups for families, so this is this year.
Okay, because I, when I picked up, um, Aneah's, uh, work for next semester, in the bag, it included notebooks and whatnot, it was great, it was a surprise. So, I, I, I appreciate, uh, what you guys are doing, um, welcome. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, um, approve the motion to accept the donation of varied school supplies from Target to Ingles Elementary School?
There's been, there's a motion and a second, roll call is required.
Uh, Mr. Casianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, Member Gately?
Uh, yes, on the agenda, it says in-house, um, suspension, but it's actually home suspensions I wanna address. Um, with us being able to use remote learning and students understanding how to use remote learning, I would like for all students that may have a need, um, and behavior problem that they are suspended for, they would have to be at home, stay at home and go to school remotely to get their education. Um, so there would not be a problem with students being at home, learning remotely for a suspension. So that's what I would like to do. And I've seen at St. Mary's, they have these boards, they're similar to smart boards. They're called View Boards by View, View Sonic. And the student can just come on and learn remotely. They'd be mandated to have to learn remotely, they'd have to get up, even though they were misbehaving in school the day before and had three-day suspension. They'd have to get up every single day, they'd have to go on to the school, go to every one of their classes. They'd get credit for being, being in school. So if, um, sometimes when students get suspended and they've already had their four-day absences for the quarter, they end up getting RLS and they get all messed up, well, this won't happen. They just have to stay at home, work for school remotely, and that's what I would like to see. Sort of goes along with my snow day, remote days and the snow bags, Michael, so-
Visit bags.
Visit bags.
Member, Member Tuttwiler?
Uh, i- i- are you asking for a policy change to our, our, our current, um-
I just really wanted to, um, bring it up and discuss it with Dr. Tuttwiler and put it out there. So, um, this would, this could really help students. Because sometimes students, when they just have had it, they just don't wanna really be going to school. So they do something silly and end up getting suspended. And then they have a free day at home to play video games, to socialize- end up getting suspended and then they have a free day at home to play video games, to socialize with one another. If a couple of them decide to get suspended on the same day, um, these are some of the experiences, Michael, I've had. But this would put it, hopefully put a stop to that. They'd get credit for the full day, but they'd have to stay at home on a suspension to separate themselves.
I think it it'd be great to, because I think we have apologies for something on the thirtieth. It'd be great for um uh Dr. Tuttwiler to to possibly speak to Attorney Gallo in the interim uh to see uh if this um idea um or proposal from uh Lorraine, uh, Member Gately is i- is one that's uh used in in the area and possibly it could be good fit for for the district.
Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yeah, ju- just quickly, um, I appreciate the the topic, uh, Ms. Gately, she knows uh that I do and uh if you permit us some time, we can work with the principals to craft something uh a little more substantive. Uh, I I don't know that it would be ready for the thirtieth. Uh, we can certainly explore from the standpoint of um, you know, law or other things that Attorney Gallo has stumbled upon uh in his work, um, to see what's what's out there, but uh permit us some time and I can make a proposal for the the committee on the topic.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, this this always allows sense. It's a great, it's a great topic. I, you know, I I think it's consistent with the conversation we've been having in the in the Policy Committee that this is that that the discipline code is going to be, is a work in progress and there's going to be updates throughout. And it may be the kind of thing where this is, this becomes a protocol or a practice and it it doesn't necessarily need to be enshrined in policy because the policy just says, you know, it it's at the administrator's discretion and then we we develop the protocol that the administrator uh uses this as their as their go-to. Uh, or 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 not. I think that makes sense for Dr. Tuttwiler to um work with his team to come up with a proposal. So that 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 all sounds good to me.
Any other thoughts on this? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, uh, Member Castellanos? On the agenda?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so uh, just to get started again, um, just want to thank everyone for their time tonight and those folks that are on. Uh, we have a good amount of participants tonight, um, you're on tonight's meeting. Um, today, um, I I'm looking to um have a discussion around MCAS. Uh, COVID nineteen has negatively and disproportionately affected our students with learning disabilities, ELL students, students of lower socioeconomic status, and students of color. Our students and teachers have been faced with unbearable inequities and this pandemic has exposed the extreme inequalities that exist in our city, state, and nation. And we need to support our students, families, and teachers who are on the front lines. Uh, tonight, I am hoping that we adopt the proposed resolution and support a suspended MCAS for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. And I want to publicly recognize and thank Member Attorney Nicholson for his role in collaborating and crafting tonight's proposed resolution. I want to thank Linn Teachers Union President Sheila O'Neill uh for her leadership and advocacy on this issue and her her staff and her team uh who have been on the ground uh working this issue. And for the ma- and for the many parent testimonies that I received on this matter, um, thank you very much. Uh, it was very um compelling and it's got us to this point to uh to take action. Um, i- i- and 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 if we have, I I believe we did share the resolution, um, but I am looking to make a motion, um, and whenever after discussion, Mayor, uh, I would like to make a motion and I can go through our process. But thank you.
Questions on the resolution for members? Member Sadoway?
Mayor McQ?
Member Sadoway? Oh, yes.
I have the resolution. Um, so I I have it in Word documents. If if anyone is looking to make any types of changes to the wording or or whatnot, uh, just please let me know so I can make the edits here before we bring it to Dot Loop to get it signed. Thank you.
Number Ford?
Yeah, I I um think this is a great um, great initiative by Mr. Castellanos. Uh, everybody knows I got two teachers and both of them are are very much against the MCAS. It's, we have we're in a unique and difficult time right now and it's it's tough enough to learn how to teach remotely on Zoom and to try and do MCAS as well, I just think is insurmountable for the teachers.
Other um discussion? Member Gately?
Well, the last time I, we spoke about this, I I was really irate. Um, and I let my feelings know. But I also would like you to know that um we probably won't have to deal with Betsy. So I'm really happy that we're writing this resolution, Brian, and I can't thank you enough and Attorney um Nicholson and Michael and everybody for getting it together and um I I just can't understand how anyone that actually understands why we have an MCAS test to begin with would ever expect us to take it in the middle of a pandemic. It's just, it's just unreal that you would think that. But anyways, that's all I have to say. I'm all for it, Brian. Good job.
Any other discussion? Member Nicholson?
I just, yeah.
Member Sadoway? Go ahead, Mom. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just quickly want to thank uh Member Castellanos uh for for uh taking the initiative on this and also to all my colleagues. I think we got some great feedback and input on it at the last meeting um uh from my colleagues on the committee and also from Mayor McGee. Uh, so, you know, it's an important issue and hopefully people will uh will will listen to the feedback.
Member Sadoway?
Thank you. Um, I I think that um this goes hand in hand with uh many of the initiatives uh being brought forth by um districts with um with 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 communities that um are are essential workers um or communities um where there's um uh, you know, issues with finances um because of COVID. Uh, you you there's the the issue that was being pushed for by Manny Cruz and um in Salem uh with regards to um the lack of technology in in certain households and what the state uh was going to do to 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 correct it. So i- i- if we, if we still haven't addressed many underlying issues, how could we in good faith um uh put the MCAS in front of any of these students? It just makes absolutely no sense. And and I I strongly support uh this resolution, um, uh, Member Castellanos, and and it it's just it, you know, it's 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 not like it's 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 hidden data. It's data that's readily available. It's data that they should be um utilizing and 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 I I understand it's 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 many uh levels of of government that comes into play, but it's it it's important for them to know that that, you know, we see what's going on because we're here on the floor. You know, we're 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 in it. My daughter is in school. So, you know, it's it it's 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 an issue and and um thank you for uh putting this together, Attorney Nicholson. Um, I I just want to make make one change. Um, uh, and uh I'm not sure if Mary added the signature, uh, the names to the bottom to be uh signed, but uh I just wanted to add the word above the signatures, supported by, um, so we we know what we're signing. So it's it's the it's the e- exact language that was provided by uh uh Brian and and Jared, supported by, and then it lists the rest of our names. That's what I would like to upload to Dot Loop to uh to get signed by the members.
Member Nick, uh, Member Castellanos?
So can I make a motion now? Can I?
Uh, does there any other discussion? Uh, Member Castellanos?
So I would like to make a motion to adopt and support the proposed resolution in support of suspended MCAS for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And may I recite the, may I recite it with the added language, Michael? Should, oh, should we wait?
No, do it.
Okay, go ahead. Linn School Committee on November twelfth, twenty twenty, the Linn School Committee Resolution in Support of Suspended MCAS for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Whereas COVID nineteen has negatively and disproportionately affected our students with learning disabilities, ELL students, students of lower socioeconomic status and students of color. And whereas our city is dealing with the disproportionate impact and trauma of the pandemic, having been in the red category throughout the pandemic to date. And whereas experts suspect that the high prevalence of the COVID nineteen virus in our city is due in part to the high number of essential workers who do not have the option of working from home and that the children of those essential workers are having to study from home without the benefit of their parent working nearby and then disproportionately suffer the consequences of the high prevalence of the virus, including the physical and emotional toll of the virus on those families affected and the inability of our students to return to in-person learning because of the high prevalence in our community. And whereas limited planning resources would be diverted away from planning to bring students back to learn safely as soon as possible, to plan and to administer a high-stakes test that apparently can only de- only delivered in person. And whereas the Linn Public Schools is acutely aware of the need to assess gaps in learning and is already planning assessments for the purpose of sizing and addressing those gaps. And whereas the purpose of administering a high-stakes test during a pandemic that has caused so much social emotional trauma in a moment when our students do not have full access to our normal array of social emotional support and that and that apparently can only be delivered in person cannot be fairly said to be for student learning when the district is already assessing the learning gaps but would rather be a misguided attempt to punish certain districts, schools, and students for their misfortune during the pandemic. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Linn School Committee hereby calls on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to suspend the administration of the MCAS for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year to the extent such such as such suspension is within their power and to request their ability to execute sus- such suspension to the extent that such suspension requires the approval of the Massachusetts Legislature and or federal government. And be it further resolved that the Linn School Committee hereby calls on our state legislative delegation to advocate for the Massachus- Massachusetts Legislature to authorize and direct the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to suspend the administration of the MCAS for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year to the extent such authorization and direction is necessary. And be it further resolved that the Linn School Committee hereby calls on our federal legislative delegation to advocate for the federal government to authorize and direct the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to suspend the administration of the MCAS for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year to the extent such authorization and dis- direction is necessary and 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 supported by the Linn School Committee.
Second?
Second.
Is there a second? Requires a roll call?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Aaron McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Mr. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I just want to send it to everyone. I'd like to send it to everyone to sign.
Okay.
So you should have it in your email now?
Say what? What's in here?
I sent off the document for signatures of the members so we can get it executed before we move on to the next um item. I have yours, Jared. Brian? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mike?
Um, I just haven't reviewed it. You didn't click the sign just yet. Nope, I got it now. Perfect.
Michael, I don't have access to it right now, so can I add on a signature after?
Is is that fine, Attorney Miles?
You're mine, Mike.
Attorney Miles is mute, so that's probably why we can't hear him. Um. Not yet, John.
I'm just unmuted.
Michael, I'm I'm gonna wait one minute and I I'll get it.
Okay. Did you want to respond to that, Attorney Miles?
What I was going to say was that she would sign it at a later time if she wished.
Okay. Once I get the fully executed document and Donna is able to to sign it, um, I'll email it to Mary and to um to Dr. Tuttwiler. I I don't have a signature just yet by I just have that, John, you viewed the document, Lorraine, you viewed it, you haven't signed it yet.
You're mine now?
Yes.
Okay.
It's always that second uh, that second thing, yeah.
Good effort.
Yeah, uh, Lorraine, I got yours. Perfect. Okay. So um I have everyone that said they were going to sign at this point, so, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Sadoway. Um, next on the agenda, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, if I may, I'm going to share my screen here. Uh, I will not uh do the full presentation that was done on the twenty ninth, uh, just a uh, much abbreviated, uh, but also updated uh, proposal on on uh the second quarter of the school year, uh, that being November twenty-third uh to February fifth. Um, just quickly, we always start with our philosophical foundation. This is the same uh slide that um the school committee has been seeing since uh, you know, late summer uh related to how we're approaching uh this year, really in many ways every year. Uh, but we did add one piece down at the bottom, italicized, uh, and emboldened uh that, you know, over the course of um the past couple of months, really uh realizing the the struggle uh that we've experienced, meeting the needs of certain groups of students. And part of our philosophy has evolved to acknowledge that uh and also commit to doing something. Uh, just quickly, uh, we we stand on this philosophy in a context of change. It's no secret that last Friday uh a new color-coded metric was released. Uh, this was developed in part to account for the nuances and the size of the various communities in the state, but also perhaps reflect uh the state's evolved thinking related to COVID. Uh, quickly, uh, in determining whether or not a community is in the red category, oh, we're down at the bottom. The fourteen-day average positive cases went from eight to ten. And an additional criterion was added as well, that being total percentage positive uh during that fourteen-day period. The threshold for the red category is four percent. For the red designation, a community must both exceed uh ten cases per day on average over fourteen days and have a fourteen-day average positive rate exceeding four percent. Uh, I updated this uh just today, actually. Uh updated this uh just today actually. If you can see here in the highlighted row, our community uh exceeds the daily threshold as well as that. Uh for the percent positive. Uh you can also see captured uh since early October, uh the data in Lynn. You can see a pretty precipitous increase, uh particularly over the past few weeks. Um there is no category uh beyond red, so suffice to say that. Uh we are pretty deeply uh in that category, given that the threshold for average daily. Uh cases is ten and we're at uh as of today forty five point one. Uh and the threshold for percent positive is four and we're at uh nearly seven and a half percent. In addition to the new metric released, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uh released updated guidance. Here, there's a clear effort to increase the number of students receiving in-person services across the state. Regardless of whether the community, a community falls with red uh in the metric. Uh the expectation is that there's in-person learning happening. Even in communities falling into the red designation, there's an expectation of hybrid learning. Except in cases where the red designation is due to on-campus transmissions or significant outbreaks in the community. Related, as I presented in the previous slide, we're clearly in the midst of a significant outbreak in our community. Further, it should be noted that uh none of these uh recommendations rise to the level of a mandate. Uh also uh absent in the updated uh DESI guidance is a timeline. An expected timeline for any of the uh features of the guidance. Uh the current context continues to be one of unpredictability and change. Uh as I've spoken or said many times, uh we're we're taking the year in quarters. Uh because planning beyond that um though simply will result or could result. Likelihood of needing to change or amend that plan. In light of the new metric and guidance, I intend to keep the proposal as I shared on the evening of October twenty ninth completely intact. I'm recommending that the district remain in remote learning during quarter two, which begins November twenty third and ends February fifth. That said, uh I'm also proposing that we transition to in-person supports. Uh stu- for students whose academic needs we struggle to meet the most in January nineteen. In the October twenty ninth presentation, I included a third order proposal as well. I'm rescinding that proposal because there's simply too strong a chance for change. And to be completely frank, it doesn't align necessarily with um the most updated guidance uh released last Friday. Related to our philosophical foundation, we need to shift our approach to better service students whose needs we struggle to meet the most. As I stated in our previous meeting, I want to make sure that I'm conveying that the challenge here is not these groups of students. It is our ability to meet their needs in the virtual format. With respect to the five programs identified and the students therein, we have struggled mightily to meet their needs. For myriad of reasons. The other group I propose that we invite for in-person service beginning January nineteenth. Uh is students who are identified as having limited or interrupted formal education and who are relatively new to the district. This group is our most at risk for dropping out. Here, we seek to provide a more robust in-person experience to ensure that this group of students is set set up for success. By more substantively ensuring that they're able to access social emotional supports. In addition to supports designed to help them uh more seamlessly access their classes. I'm recommending that we remain in remote learning beginning November twenty third, the first day of the second quarter. Uh and I'm proposing that we transition to some in-person learning for groups of students totaling approximately three hundred. Whose needs we struggle to meet the most beginning January nineteenth. Um as I mentioned in the previous meeting, we need to go to the next level of specificity around program days and hours. Updating any safety protocols and training. Additionally, has been the S has been the case since last spring, we'll continue to consult with our own nursing department. The city's Board of Health and Lynn Community Health to ensure that the steps are in keeping with the latest thinking. Around safety and procedure. I wanna also just reiterate uh that both our own nursing department. Lynn Community Health and uh the city Board of Health, this plan has been shared with them and they are in agreement. Both with the substance of our plan uh and the dates that we outline. Finally, we'll continue to embrace the philosophical elements tied to communication. We want families to know what we see as the next step and ensure that the supports are there. Uh to help them keep their student learning and growing. Uh related, uh I'm planning to host another uh virtual town hall likely the first week. Uh uh of December. Happy to entertain any questions that you have or clarify uh anything that needs clarifying.
Dr. Tuttwiler, could you um, thank you. Member Sadoway? Then Member Nicholson.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Um now, uh we've known over the past uh seven or eight months. Uh that DESI uh gives you updates on a daily basis and sometimes they can be contradictory or different and and complete. Um so uh I I'm as a parent, I I I'm asking, and as obviously a school community member. Um since our last meeting, um obviously the election happened and then um just this week, Pfizer said. That they had a vaccine that had a ninety percent success rate. Has has there been any discussion with DESI or or the state with regards to to that? Um and i- is it gonna be required like the flu shot? Do you know? Uh is there any? Um uh import or or any information being put out uh with that? And obviously this won't change the fact that we still need to update our HVAC system, so even if the vaccine comes out, we still need to spend that money. Correct?
Yeah, un- unfortunately, um I I don't have the secret handshake on 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 some of these things. Um uh the commissioner has scheduled a call for next Thursday. Um typically when they schedule calls, they don't necessarily spend along an agenda. They just say there's a call coming. Uh I'm not sure what that next update is going to bring. Uh I'll certainly share it. Uh but I I I will say that um y- you know, as it relates to the vaccine. Uh you know, I can only share what I've heard, um which is even with the rollout, there's going to be some intentionality around. Who gets the vaccine first?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh you know, people who are working in the medical community, things of that nature, high-risk folks. Uh and and so, you know, I I don't see this as being something that's gonna have a heavy impact on this year. Uh what I do see as being more impactful this year is the proposed. Uh rapid testing um rollout that DESI is working with districts now to 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 put in place. Um I see that as being a significant factor uh for us, uh potentials we look ahead this year. But for right now, uh our our approach has always been, uh and will continue to be. To give time uh for families to plan accordingly. Doesn't mean always that everyone likes to plan and quite frankly. I really wish that we were in a place where we could invite students back for more more students back for in-person learning. Uh but we're not, and so I'd rather say to families, here's our plan. Uh it is a it is not a short-term plan. It's it's a plan that's gonna take us uh you know to the. You know, the early days of February, families can plan accordingly. Uh there's a small group of students who, um I think, you know, everyone who who knows about those groups of students. Knows that uh we need to provide in-person services for them. We've been running the Learning Support Center. Uh after school at three locations, serving largely uh the students who are prioritized for in-person beginning January nineteenth. It has been flawless thus far, um and so uh you know, really the idea is is to add some. Predictability to the extent that we can in this context for 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 all. Uh and I think the, go ahead.
And and I I just wanna uh to 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 put out that it's not, it's not like you didn't have this information. Uh in in front of you before you made the decision to bring it to us today, uh in this in this and. A- and I'm just uh the the initial decision that uh was brought to the school committee in the beginning of the school year was the hybrid model. But almost uh maybe two or three days after, with the new information you had, you made your decision to to change it. So tha- that's what what we need as a leader, a leader that's not stuck uh with one viewpoint. That that understands that there's, you know, it's ever-changing. So that's what I want the community to know, that you know, you brought this to us today. Knowing about this supposed uh vaccine that that could be coming out, but it still wouldn't impact next quarter. And that's why you're putting it out there for people to know that, hey, you have some at least some certainty for next quarter. So I appreciate that and you know, that's why I wanted to bring up this because I I wanted to to know where that was in your mindset. And then this is the second thing that I have is, again, being a special education uh attorney, I I I have. These students i- in my mind, okay? So what are what are we doing to to? To to increase numbers so we can get more of these kids um with the services that they need?
Yeah, so um the group that's proposed for during the day in person, uh again. Uh it it's actually two groups. It's uh special education students uh and SLICE students, uh all of whom are. High school students, the SLICE students. Um there's another group uh that we've identified of special education students who we would then transition to. Receiving in-person support in the after-school program. Uh immediately upon starting uh this during-the-day uh service for um. You know, the the groups that we've identified beginning January nineteenth. Uh and so so that's that's our process and you know, again, January nineteenth is, you know, two, three weeks before the end of the quarter.
After school, right?
Correct.
That kind of defeats the purpose. It it you know, the the in-school learning I I is is my. Is my worry.
Um uh I respectfully, I I'm not sure what what purpose it it defeats. I mean, this this. This provides students who need uh PT OT uh to get those services in person. Uh the the related services, they get direct uh contact, they get socialization opportunities that they're not able to get. Uh virtually. I think it's it's a value-add. It certainly has been uh for the past three weeks. Uh so we would be expanding, whether before school, after school, more in-person services or in-person services. To more students beginning January nineteenth.
I agree, it's better than what we have now. I agree with you on that. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any questions, Member Capola? Then Member Nicholson.
Dr. Tuttwiler, are there any plans for the Lynn Tech students for their shots and their hours? Uh being able to come in?
Yeah, so um that's also uh uh a a major uh, you know, nip on our radar, for lack of better. Expression and uh Karissa Karakides and her team are working on crafting a plan that I can uh first. Present to um the Board of Health, um as we typically do for any sort of in-person services. Um this is a plan frankly that we would be uh targeting seniors. Don't have a date. Uh this is something sort of that's in the work right now, uh but we'd be targeting seniors so that they'd be able to get their hours in before they graduate. Uh that's something that's evolving that I'll bring to you uh once it's uh taken more shape.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, for the proposal. Um so I I understand that we have shared our plan with DESI. Right? And they and they broadly were uh supportive. Um I am. I'm really frustrated by the fact that they have created this new category. Of communities with the highest COVID nineteen caseloads and test positivity rates and it supposedly come with. Uh additional strategies, you know, customized strategies to reduce in-school health risks and they, at least when they defined it. Initially, and when I spoke with you earlier this week, they defined it just by listing three communities. Leaving hard-hit cities like us who just like wonder, are we included in that? You know, look, the numbers, we should be, but they specifically said EG. With so either they have a number of mine and are telling us or they they haven't created a number. And and these are, this is supposed to be to help us plan to come back and they're not even telling us if we're included in this category. And it 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 really frustrates me. I think it it feels like honestly that the state is. Uh making every effort to. Generate the feeling that they're telling districts to go back to school and prioritizing that. Over providing the actual supports that would make that possible. And and I I I think it's really frustrating, you know, the the I I I totally understand that. We need to listen to our public health experts in in this and 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 this is a recommendation that has been. Uh supported and approved by the the Department of Public Health and and our nursing department and the Lynn Community Health Center. Uh I I would love for that number of three hundred and fifty to be higher. Uh for us to be able, cause it cause I'm the I I know. Uh I have no sort of issue with those being three hundred and fifty students but that are struggling the most to meet their needs. But there are also other students that are struggling a lot for those needs to be met. Uh and so I would love that number to be higher. I would love it to be earlier than January nineteenth. Um I understand that that we we are listening to our experts and recommendation. But you know, I I and I, we talked about this last meeting, we talked a little about it before, we talked about it earlier tonight. That that the testing program, I think, is is gonna be a really important part of that and and Mayor, you mentioned what's happening at. Northeastern, I'm I'm a faculty there, I'm back to teaching in person. I get tested twice a week. I got tested this morning. I got my result this afternoon. And the the that we all know the difference, right? That that they're Northeastern gets tuition money. And that's how they, and that's a big part of how they can fund an operation like that. The public schools rely on on state aid broadly. And that because they're universal, they're supposed to be free and in in today's world, that's just gonna require significant investment in public health. For you to be able to provide a universal uh public education. And to for for them to say that they're telling districts to go back and then not providing that support, I think is is is. Uh putting putting us in a in a really difficult situation. Um that is 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 not fair to our students, obviously, because the the goal should be to get them as soon as. To back, actually back as soon as possible, not sort of uh. In the back and it's not fair to the parents, which because I think it's setting unrealistic expectations to see the the. Uh officials on television saying that all all students should be back. And it's not fair to the teachers, because I think it's undermining uh the efforts that we're making, the 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 honest, good-bye efforts that we're making. To show them how we can come back safely when the time is right. Uh so I mean the 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 question I have is, can you give us an update on the the conversations that we're having? With our partners about how we can uh maximize our our testing capabilities. Uh to to make to make that as safe as possible when it's ready?
Yeah, uh first, uh I appreciate uh and agree with everything you said. Uh and I I I I I really do appreciate you sharing that perspective and. Um as folks who, you know, uh are are at the planning meetings and, you know, at the table. Uh day in, day out, trying to create scenarios to optimize the learning uh and growth scenario for kids every day. Um the degree of frustration around many aspects of it is um. Uh you know, it's 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 beyond measure. Uh I I I will just say one quick thing before I talk about the testing. I know we meet uh monthly. Um with Lynn Community Health, uh just our teams, the social emotional learning. Uh team, our our nursing department, myself, the deputies. Uh just to make sure that we're staying together as we move forward uh on everything from behavioral health. Uh to, you know, things like, you know, the flu vaccine and things of that nature. Uh we had our meeting today and uh I'd spoken to the executive director about our plan weeks ago. Uh and gotten the the thumbs up on it, but one thing that they said today. Uh that 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 really uh struck home with me is, you know, the the the. The 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 history uh short-term around holidays and coronavirus spikes in our community. You know, tha- 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 the tha- the history uh short-term around holidays and coronavirus spikes in our community. It is, it is no longer uh a question mark, it's predictable. Uh, and so, you know, after each holiday, whether it's, you know, Easter or, you know, July fourth or what have you. The city experiences uh an increase. Now, I just presented to everybody, you know, already an incredible. Uh, super precipitous increase uh in cases, and we haven't even gotten to the holidays yet. Uh, and so there's grave concern uh about what Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years uh is is going to is going to bring, given the experience thus far. And so that date of January nineteenth is intentional, uh and has everything to do with what. Uh, they believe and what we believe is safest uh for kids. As it relates to testing. Uh, they were the first phone call that I made. Uh, I also spoke to Michelle DeMares. Uh, the uh director of the 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 City Board of Health around uh around testing. And Lynn Community Health is committed to supporting us uh in providing testing for staff and students. It's starting on Monday, uh and our Learning Support Center has a weekly uh testing protocol. But there's no reimbursement uh for 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 the testing. Uh, it actually costs. Uh, and both their capacity and the cost make this uh a challenging, make, you know, Lynn Community Health. Um, a a challenging um sort of avenue to travel as it relates to uh January nineteenth. A much more accessible avenue is the um rapid testing uh protocol that's uh right now being rolled out. Uh, to districts who want to roll it out, uh sponsored by DESI. Um, we, myself and the uh Director of Nursing, we're on a call a couple of weeks ago about this uh opportunity. Uh, we've put our name in the i- in the basket for more information. Uh, we're in the process of completing the application. This is something that needs to be done in partnership with Lynn Community Health. Uh, this is something that we do see there being promised uh in, because it doesn't cost, uh and it's effective. Uh, and so we're hopeful uh that tha- that will be in place long before uh the January nineteenth date. And that could potentially uh create a scenario where we could expand uh the number of students that we're ha- that that we're bringing back. Uh, but uh rather than make that promise, I would rather go through the process. Uh, and let let uh, you know, time happen and 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 see what happens. But right now, we're we're seeing that as a as a promising opportunity.
Well, to a point well taken, Dr. Tutwiler, testing, timing, and the access to testing is gonna be key. Uh, as well as the rapid testing that uh needs to be, I think, uh higher in terms of um accuracy. Some question about false positives on that. So I think the timing and the the ability to test and all of that is is an ongoing discussion. And as part of this, and and as I've said before, this evolves day to day. The changes come day to day, the cases go up day to day. And the ability to address what we're doing is, so um I think you've nailed a a number of the important issues. Member Sadoway?
Uh, and and Dr. Tutwiler, I just wanted to uh to bring up just two things um before we begin. Um, one of the things is I I I'm I'm very um happy with the the election guidance that you um and the social workers put out for students and and educators. Um, for the election that took place um on the the third. Um, and then um obviously, I'm pretty sure you're aware of uh the incident that took place at Gordon. And um with the um racism that took place on the the shirt. Was that brought to your attention yet?
Uh, is it? No, it has not been.
Okay, so I'm I've forwarded along to you, but I I I was trying to reiterate to the the Ling community. Um, tha- there was a a shirt left, I believe, in the laundry room with the N-word written on it. So um tha- tha- the community doesn't want us uh working with Gordon anymore, but I'm pretty sure we 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 told the community multiple times. That there's no longer a a relationship with the with the establishment. And i- if you can just um continue to reiterate that, that'd be great, because uh it keeps coming back to us when things like this happen.
Yeah, I I you you know, we we had a pretty robust conversation uh feels like years ago, but it was uh late last fall. Uh, about Gordon College and my task uh was to come back to you in the months of, you know, March or April with. Uh substantive report out on a university partnership. Um, at some point, I will circle back to that, but um right now, uh we do not have any formal relationship with them. Um, and I think, you know, incidents like that um uh say something.
Thank you.
All the discussion on this issue?
Can I make a motion?
Member Sadoway?
Motion to adjourn? There's nothing else on the agenda, right?
No.
Yeah, I I need a.
Father down the list.
I I need a, yeah, you got a couple of things uh left, but I I need a, I need a vote on uh on that proposal.
Um, a motion to um accept the proposal set forth by Dr. Tutwiler with regards to the second quarter.
A second?
Second, okay.
And a motion and second, a roll call required.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
And Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Member G?
Yes. Next on the agenda is um a vote to cancel the eighteenth regular meeting on November twenty-sixth and the twentieth regular meeting on December thirty-first. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call required.
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Member G?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the um Athletic Subcommittee Meeting uh Discussions.
Uh, there were two votes taken. Uh, the first was to authorize Dr. Tutwiler. To approve a six-week basketball schedule starting on January fourth. With a contingency, with a contingency plan to play games outside of Lynn if needed for safety.
Uh, I don't recall that being the motion that was made at that meeting. Uh, Member Nicholson?
Yeah, with Member Forge's permission.
Yes.
Yeah, so I I think my, what I, where we had landed, um, in my recollection was to ask Dr. Tutwiler. You sort of with 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 that as a rough draft in the back of our mind, but tha- but the specific motion would be to ask Dr. Tutwiler to go to the M I A A. For formal clarification as to what would be required for a for a a red district to be able to have a season. So that we could make the actual decision when we had, we're we're closer with more of a clear picture what the public health situation would be. But in the meantime, there was some uncertainty as between um. As between uh what the athletic directors have been told by their contacts with the M I A A. And what the the formal written guidance was. And so to to get to see, to sort of authorize Dr. Tutwiler to formally get clarification on that, on that issue.
And I I would, I would, I would add, I think that was the discussion. Uh, and uh, I think, which which reflects uh ongoing discussions and information before any decision can get made related to any kind of mid-season. That's my take on what was discussed. Uh, Member Gailey?
Uh, I have the agenda in my hand, and I believe what we would wanna do is we wa- would wanna change. Uh, participation of athletic teams in the conference to the um.
That's the second, that's the second.
All right.
That's the next one.
Oh, okay.
But so look, I if I recall, i- it's um, Mr. Mayor, uh what Jared said is what I remember. I I don't recall there being um uh the vote that uh Mr. Ford said that took place.
We men- we mentioned the starting a six-week league.
Yeah.
On January fourth, that was by, I believe that was put forth by Mr. Newton.
Can can I interject that, Mr. Mayor?
Um.
Just quickly, I just wanna make a.
Athletic Director Devon for clarification?
Just a clarification, it was um a proposal for all winter sports, including swimming. Basketball, uh ice hockey for boys and girls, as well as track. Did I miss any, Dick? On, okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't just for basketball, it was for all of our winter sports programs.
Hey, may I stand, stand corrected?
Thank, thank. It's excluding wrestling. So a- again, from my, from my perspective, I I um. Based on all of the different facts we have, I think it's important to get more information before we start making decisions on what we'll do. Uh, in the in the interim, um I had indications from the town administrators from Chelsea that they're not planning on having winter sports. Um, at least at this point, uh which would be one of the teams in the Greater Boston League. So I, again, um, there's a number of things that need to be done if we're even gonna um take a look at. Uh, doing this, and I think the motion that was made to have the superintendent, uh first of all, get information from what happens next week. Uh, at the M I A A, have the superintendent find that information out and 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 the, my understanding and uh Dick Newton, uh I know you're on, you can. Um, correct me, but there's a number of things that need to be done, one being that Health Director of the City would have to approve any, any um. Sports uh proposal moving forward, as well as the school committee and superintendent. So I I I just would suggest, based on the data we have right now, it's premature to make a a decision, but that we need more information. Uh, related to that, and and that would be my suggestion. Uh, that we uh we continue to re- uh uh review this, and then the superintendent can be involved in some of the discussions related to other superintendents. Uh, separate from the G B L discussion. That would be my, that would be my suggestion.
Would it be possible to say, uh authorize Dr. Tutwiler to investigate the possibility of starting um any any sports in January?
Again, from my perspective, I think it's premature to to make those decisions with a lot of information that has to come in. Uh, but um, Member Nicholson? And then um I see that um, Member Nicholson, then we'll go to uh um Dick Newton.
Thanks, yeah, I mean, quickly, I think we have plenty of time between now and January. Uh, I mean, it's not gonna be November thirtieth in terms of us getting a season in. Um, and so uh my understanding is that right now the biggest. Uh, holdup would be to to be able to uh get the M I A's approval to do this, because under Dr. Tutwiler's interpretation of what is allowed now, the M I A wouldn't even allow it. So I I feel like that that is, that getting that clarification is a critical path, whether or not we, and 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 uh, so I I I think that. If we wanna have it, that's the right next step, and so I I feel like that.
My original proposal in the meeting was to just table it until we had more information. Which I think we should do, um, you know, we, if we can't move forward, then table it and we'll look at it at the next meeting.
And I'd like to make, I'd like to ma- make a point here as well, because of the timing of this. Uh, we've had numerous uh reasons to have meetings uh over the the last six months. Uh, in fact, we have meetings weekly over the summer when we never meet, so there there's an opportunity here. And I think, at least from my recollection, and again, I'm happy to be corrected. But I think tha- tha- from what the discussion was, uh it was that the superintendent would go to the M I A A and find out what's required for a district. Uh, in writing to have sports, so I think that's, I think that's where at, and in terms of the ongoing discussions, doesn't mean we can't. Uh reconnect uh and find out what exactly we have to do. And I think, uh, Dick Newton, you said next week, there's some meetings related to this that's going on between the A Ds and and trying to figure out what actually is gonna be happening moving forward as well.
Well, tha- well, the teams in our league, the teams in the Northeast Conference at this time will probably all be playing, with the exception of um Lynn and maybe Winthrop. So the question that's gonna come up in that meeting is, uh, are we gonna put you on the schedule? Well, because they're gonna do the schedules for, say, starting in December, January. So I would like to have a a decision as soon as we could, just so we can decide whether or not we're gonna play. And that's, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna find, they're gonna, they they wanna know what they're gonna do too with us. And I also wanna know if we're in the red and we're allowed to play, will those teams still play us? That's another question that we have to, that's come up.
Well, I I, I think it's a great point. Uh, one thing is, is our team's gonna want uh teams from Lynn coming in without specific guidelines. Particularly if our cases continue to increase in what we've seen over the last three to four weeks. Um, and I guess the other question I had related to that discussion was, was was the ability, if it's in January, to do other. Uh, other schedules with other teams, or or is that hot and fast on the Northeast Conference? Particularly with discussions going on for the uh the February Fall sports schedule coming in.
Well, do we need a vote for um Dr. Tutwiler to move forward with the M I A A?
Yes, to get the, at least get the information that we need.
All right.
I I make a motion to to authorize Dr. Tu- Tu- Dr. Superintendent Tutwiler to. To further assess and attain information through M I A.
Give me three seconds.
Second, Brian made a motion for Dr. Tutwiler to engage um with the M I A A. Uh, for the um winter sports, correct?
What would be required?
Correct, what would be required, correct. You get that, Nan?
I don't know.
Okay.
So are you tabling that ratification of the vote taken in the Athletic Subcommittee? You tabling that?
I I think we're just taking tha- that vote to the full committee.
Right, right now.
Right.
No, well, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
That wasn't the vote. I had the motion was to ratify the vote in Athletic Subcommittee, move Lynn English and Lynn Tascal to Greater Boston League.
That's, that's the second one.
That's your second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that all in my thing. I didn't get a vote.
You must have missed the first one on the end.
I don't, I want you to vote on it.
First one.
My uh, okay.
So so Brian brought the 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 current um motion. And it was seconded by Jared, and I think the mayor was gonna request uh that it be. Oh, God.
Member Gailey?
I I am so confused right at this moment, because on the first one, it was a student support with Mr. Castellanos. And we decided that we tabled that, and we would talk about it at the next meeting. And then on the next one, the second petition, that's where they took the vote. And she's absolutely right, they took a vote that changed the pa- participation of athletic teams in the conference. That's how my memory is of that. I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but I don't recall taking any vote in that Subcommittee for that first one.
We did.
Okay, what do you want me to do?
Uh, I I I, but respectfully, we we took two votes in the Sub- in the Athletic Subcommittee meeting.
Just, we took two votes.
I I promise, they did.
Yeah, okay, hold on, let's let's, let's um, Member Nicholson and then the Member Castellanos and the Member Sadoway.
Uh, I mean, we 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 can definitely have Nan uh take, this is being recorded, so thi- this will be easy to to verify. Um, but that was certainly my recollection.
Yeah, we definitely took two votes.
Yeah. And the motion's on the table, so if we got it first, do we move forward or I rescind it? Wait, well, I I still have the mo- I stand with my motion.
Does Dr. Tutwiler engage my M I A?
Yes.
What would be required? M I A is required.
Uh, for the winter sports.
For the winter sports, thank you.
And second by Jer- Attorney Nicholson, so Jared.
Who made that motion?
Brian Castellanos.
Uh, okay, all right, you ready? Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Managiri?
Yes.
And also, there was a vote taken for both Classical and English to move to the GBL.
Any discussion?
I wanna thank the the athletic directors for joining us tonight and uh Mr. Gary and just the whole, the 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 transparency and the hard work that was put into, you know, getting us, you know, the right information. Um, obviously, the MIA is evolving, all the guidelines have been, you know, adjusting and moving. And I I do appreciate their efforts on just keeping us all in the groups, the coaches involved with this. Um, and just, in terms of just the GBL, the the presentation that was delivered was very um resourceful. And I do appreciate the modification of keeping some of the, you know, if you look at those other, like, those other uh school districts that we compete with, almost fifteen year, fifty years of tradition, I like the fact that we can keep those out of conference games. Um, again, like Swamp Star, for example, I I do um, I do like that feature, so. I make a motion to to support um the district going into the GBL.
Would would it be approved or support?
For approved, um, I approve that move.
I think it's our role to um to vote to uh accept the recommendations for the two uh athletic directors to um put Lynn English and Lynn Classical uh into the Greater Boston uh Boston League, the GBL. So that's, we have, we have both athletic directors here, that's a request from both uh uh both Dick Newton and uh Bill Devon is to, uh you made the point pretty clearly in the other meeting, Dick, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, we, Billy and I have had discussions since July over this, and and even previous years, we talked about it. And we're both a hundred percent for going to the GBL for various reasons, so, you know, I don't think I need to go through them all. Um, and our principals are with it, Dr. Tutwiler's with it, we're, we're in this together. And um it's a good move for our schools, it's a good move for uh for competitive balance, equity. They're like schools, they have the same issues as we do, they have the same issues student-wise, and um I think it's a great move for us. Both schools.
Thanks, Dick. Bill, you wanna, any follow-up to that?
Nah, I I echo the uh exactly what Dicky just said. Uh, number one, competitive balance for not just a couple of our teams, but for all of our sports teams. Um, also the diversity that it brings. Uh, and Dicky, I don't know if you mentioned the proximity of the schools for us for travel. And uh most importantly, the GBL schools, when we were in the league with them before, have unbelievably unbelievable facilities for our kids. Um, I'm, I'm excited about this. I know in my heart that this is the right move for both schools going forward.
Thank you both, and then there's a motion on the table to approve the recommendation, to approve the recommendation to move Lynn Classical and Lynn English to the uh GBL.
And Nan, that was by Brian.
Thank you for that, okay.
Second.
There's a second, requires a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Capora?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Managiri?
Yes. Um, with that, we are through the new business, uh Dr. Tutwiler, uh any other? Do you have, uh, it's up to communication and information? Um, Dr. Tutwiler?
No, sir, just an enrollment report that was included in the package.
That's all we have on the agenda.
May- maybe I'll do it right this time. Can I make a motion?
Motion, yes you can.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Motion.
That's it.
Second, requires a roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capora?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Managiri?
Yes.
Who made that motion, I didn't get it?
Uh, motion to adjourn was by me, Michael. And Donna, don't forget to sign that, please.
I thought I did already.
No, you just muted it, you gotta sign it.
Good night, doll, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, have a good one.